I'd like to call the order for this special call workshop.
I will do the pledge of allegiance and I will do the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pray. Father, thank you for this day and thank you for your time to come together to support Jasper County Benefit, Jasper County Do Things, to honor our citizens and then our employees. Father, give us guidance and wisdom today as we go through this budget and help us make best decisions for everyone. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Is there any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda. Make a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comment? We all have today clerk of the court first and sheriff's mouth for second. No? And do I have a vote? Excuse me. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All against? Motion has passed. Mr. Oliver.
Mr. Chairman, you introduced your guests today, the constitutional officers. I just suggest you proceed that way. You said the clerk of court first and the sheriff second. And then we're prepared to give you a general budget update after that.
Ms. Thorpe, you're up.
Thank you very much for having me here today. I know y'all got a last minute deal on my budget and everything. I apologize about that, but it's better than what you had before looking at it's more clearer picture and makes stuff a little more transparent for you to see, which we're trying to do. I know I'm asking for more money, but as I tell everybody, you can come to office, I can show you why we're doing this stuff. We're doing a mobile request there. We're using the money very for making sure we do not waste what we get and we put it to use in the citizens of Jasper County and get the return and getting a good court system over there at the county. But you know, this is my first go around at this, so how do you want me to start and what do you want to ask for?
Just go over your budget, whatever you want, and we ask questions.
You can see on our salary table, let's start first on my court funds. The form you have, I think, shows 175. That should be at least 200 now. We're already over 200. Last year it was 218. Fines are unfortunately going to continue to go up, population not decrease, so I think that line should be moved to 200. Also on Title IV funds, after going back playing with our numbers on family court cases, we're well over 75% Title IV family court collection cases. We can take that and a lot from our employees and stuff. I think we need to move that to at least 260, 265,000, and we are well within the law and below the law of doing that with the number. And I know it's some stuff out there in the paper. We are well within the guidelines to do that, to put the money to use the way it's supposed to be used and help also set some of the taxpayers expenses up, put that money the legal way of using it. So I would suggest taking that to 260 from 175. That will increase my bottom line revenue totals and everything to 465, 460. Salary and wages, we're at 590 on that. That's what the new employees, we added and stuff for this year doing. That's the bailiffs and stuff like that. When you look at my employees that chose 13, we gotta realize three, I believe, three of those are bailiffs. Technically four, but one bailiff is full time doing jury summonings and bailiffs. But the other three are bailiffs. They're only use a certain amount of time, so, and it's a pot of money. Me and Ms. Burgess talked yesterday, set that up on their pot of money, not a number of people to be paid out. We gotta get Nicole on that because we're not going to use so much money for that, not that much money per person, like it's budget, I believe in this budget to be done. It's one pot for that bailiff overhaul we're going to hit, which is around, I think, we put 25, 30, somewhere in that range for bailiff views and everything. Because one thing, since I came here last, family court has requested, not the administration, the judges, they won't bailiff. When I came here, we didn't have bailiffs anywhere. And I use the word bailiff legally, it's Usher, it's the way we do it, meet the law We've had to add them for general sessions. We've had to add them for family court for when the judge is there. We've been told yesterday, going through family court, working on this here, we have to do them in DSS in there, which is the biggest part. And y'all have not been made aware yet, we're no longer allowed to use our second courtroom for family court. If you look on your agenda for the conference room and chambers and stuff, you'll see we're requesting. We're trying to do nonviolent stuff over here to make room because we lost that. And they're still wanting to add more weeks of court to us. We have a pretty much constant court schedule going on there at the courthouse. There's always, you go there, there's pretty much something going on. So we added to it since I've been here. So you'll see, we have a request for one person. That person is to help staff. When family court general session is going on and stuff like that, we're losing the Usher and our bailiff there, and we're having to take our staff out of general session. We had it the other day in general session where because of keeping the staff insecurity that we're required to do, we had one person sitting in our general sessions office. And you can't, that's not safe to leave one person in there because they come in and we deal with money and cash and stuff, but we had one person left in that office. I promise you, I'm not trying to overspend and take more money from taxpayers that we don't need. I'm trying to make sure if you come in and you visit my courthouse, you're going to be safe as a public coming into it. I'm trying to make sure that my employees are safe and not left by themselves in a room in a condition where something could happen. I put safety first on everything, and there's been a lot of safety issues over there. We've been working on and correcting with maintenance and we're making progress and stuff with it. But we came in and you're going to see, like I say, my budget's a lot more, but we've hit a lot of stuff that has been stagnant for so long that we've had to hit and address and correct. And unfortunately, that's taken money. There's a lot of procedures we had to do from dealing with evidence. We had no civil department there. We had to create a civil department. There was one person there. I believe we had 48 hundred cases that was left, not closed out, active. She's been working on them. We're down at 733, and that's one person doing that along with her working as a deputy for family court as well.
Excuse me, just what's civil, what do you mean civil?
Civil, common league cases. That type of case, of course, right there. We had, they had one person and she left. We had nobody. Luckily, we had Laura. She came in, she's done a great job. We got it up. We've been going around checking, doing stuff, and we have it to where we're moving. We found a lot of stuff like that. It wasn't just there, it was the general sessions we had to correct and stuff. We have a large caseload and just like the growth in Jasper County, with the growth comes crown, with the crown will work for us. So I apologize to the public and to the council for asking for money, but I'm asking for it takes to run the courthouse effective, meet the laws and correctly, and provide a service to the citizens that when they come in there, they know they're getting quality service and being treated fair, and we're transparent on everything we got and you can see and stuff. The other thing I didn't touch is, and we haven't even touched it yet because I'm only five months in, a little five months. My, one of my main jobs is keeping the records. There's not a good plan in place for that yet. There was a partial one in place and we're trying to enhance that. And there's a big line item in here that you're going to hit on that, and I brought some information on the machine. We're asking to bring it up to where, right now, if you want to come see our data storage, at the start, if we had disk, you can't access them. So it does the public no good. We still have to go to that basement. Every time we walk to that basement and we pull file out, unfortunately, we're human, everybody's human, there's a chance of losing something in that file. We lose something in that file, it can cause somebody to get out of prison or not get to put somebody in jail that they need with that file and stuff, with information being lost that we have to turn over and keep and maintain. So the more hands I keep off of that, the better we are prepared, safer we are with our records to make sure they're handled correctly and stuff. So that's kind of brief of where we are of what we're doing. So you see the salaries. If you got any question on it, we did ask for one new. I hated to do it because y'all have been very gracious to me and given employees, but because of family court, that I had no idea we were going to come and do in the bailiff process, we really need that. Our family court is up to, they're handling, the spree ladies and they're handling, they handle 400 cases apiece. And if you go in family court and watch what they do with those records, that's a whole lot of work. One other person would not get and be able to help bailiff down to 300, 100 cases less per person, which gets it more manageable. The more cases you do, the more overload, the more chance you have errors. So that's why I'm asking for the $38,000 for this position here. And on this position, it's not including any money that we can give back from 4D funds because it will, when we get them in there and get the job descriptions in time and how much they're working in 4D, we'll be able to use some of that title for money to cut that salary down some. But I don't want to give it till we know the legal percentage that we're going to be using that person for dealing with the child support stuff so we can credit money back to accounting to offset that salary. So you do see that there and you see that at a higher end than it will be. And I know when I came here the first time, I told you I'd give you more money on 4D and put incentive. I looked at it, I've stood good to my word on that. I took it from 98,000 when I told you we're up to 255,000. That's not a bad jump in line going up. I know I've jumped up on the other end, but I am trying to help offset what I can with money that we have that we can legally use like that to help with your budget. Other than that, that's basically my salary is the same over that one position is all I'm asking there. I'm not going to go into retirement and insurance and court, all that stuff. If that's more, him there and Nicole, if you got questions on that, they can answer you. I'd be just reading an excerpt page on that for you. Same with telephones and utilities. That's more, we get that straight from the county. Kimberly and her office pretty much, I believe, handles that for us, so can't take a whole up there. Audit service, I put in for 6,500. We are still at the point, we need to have somebody come in to go through our books to maintain what we do. And I wanted to switch from where it says family court, it needs to be court audit service because it's going to be used for both all court accounts doing it that come back through and check my book. So it was 3,000 last year, it went to 6,500 this year and stuff. And I did account for some of the money from that, can come from child support, do it. So I didn't ask for as much as this will actually cost because we will pull money from there to offset that when we get the bill and get it to buy that. Thanks to our, but 65 puts it to where we can use some title for money because we got some here, get the percentage right, and we'll be able to pay for it to keep the costs and get a true line of our budgets and stuff doing because I'm working off of somebody else's system. We're trying to get it in line with the system I'm more comfortable with on the budget stuff. Office supplies, when I came in, I had $4,500. That was one item I had issues with because we had a lot of stuff we bought that was nowhere really to put it because of me being new and just not really knowing where to put it. So a lot of stuff went in office supply that may have shown with the court costs, stuff like that, that, and it went up. If I take it off of what it was this year, we'd want like 14,000 for it. We're, we're down to 98 and I think we could do it because me and Ms. Burgess just had a good meeting, we went over some stuff, that's number. We kind of figured out some stuff that we just, in five months, it's a long time, it's a real long time when you're trying to keep the courthouse running and everything going on. We've had time to sit down, go through the numbers and stuff and clear up a lot of issues there that was, is going to help, I think, keep that. Because I don't want to build a budget and try to protect what we do and we put in. So we're at 98 in there, but we do, we print forms that we give out to people, we get them printed and stuff like that. That increased our costs. We don't take a piece of paper and cut it and so it's been handed out to people. That's, we're a professional courthouse, sorry. I'm not, we're not going to go that route. I want to save money, but we also got to be professional in what we do. You will see in here, and I'll bring this one up first, you're going to see that we have, our travel is increased some. From talking to the other clerks, they used to not go to the training sessions. They have two a year for clerk. I'm wanting, I sent my first two this year with me to the conference. It is extremely beneficial, I can tell you. They got a lot out of it. We brought back stuff that we're going to be able to offset. We now know in family court, there already been, our general sessions has already been doing, family court can now get set off that somebody owes tax money, they owe money, we can do it. Because of going to that conference, we found out you can do that now in family court side to get money back. So we're going to start doing that to get money back on that side. We're doing it on general session, so hopefully, you know, you go to a conference, you get stuff, we're going to get returns up. Now, just hope that not been mentioned, we find stuff legal that we want to stay in line that keeps you from getting sued, then they'll be court. So our conference is held, I don't want to be the only one going. It needs to be, our deputies need to go and hopefully we can get to a point where maybe we can rotate our employees in to get them there because they come back with more knowledge and stuff when they go to the conference. It's not play, I can tell you. I've been the first one, it's not play. They keep in crisis, they keep stuff going on. It's well, it's money well spent. So I have up that and that's why you'll see that increase. We want to take people there that's doing the job out there with me so they can learn and they can get the benefit from it. Contract labor was 40,000 last year. Right now, it's showing none. My suggestion is to put 2,500 in there. What I'd use that for last year, some of that money that we, stuff like that that worked good with that, was if we have, we have a great maintenance department, but we had some heavy furniture and shelves and stuff we had to move. It was too much for them. We brought a moving company in to help move those cases, those shelves, that's too much for maintenance to do. That's the only reason I want that money because we still have some moving and stuff we have to do at the courthouse, so we have to do it. We don't overwork our maintenance department and take the rest of them hurt that back and stuff, get somebody trained to lift and do. I'm asking for 2,500 to go back in there. That was oversight on my part yesterday, not getting Ms. Burgess to put that in. Contract services is for sheriff's department, the security and stuff. We're not real sure where it's going to be this year. We kind of went off of where we're expecting based off of the last contract and we went to 60,000 on that. We don't have a clear number because we're new enough there with the sheriff department so we're not sure what that number's going to call in. But that's what that number's for, is for security, for the sheriff department doing our security at the courthouse. That's pretty much all that's in that line items for us. I know that is it in there. And you got your building insurance. The one thing I was talking about was the data storage for our files and stuff that we're, we're keeping. If you want one of these, I got them. This is a file we're kind of going to, we have disk and stuff now that I, I'm the one I didn't get left any. I went back and looked and they got me copies of all the disk where we have been paying for years to get stuff brought over to disk several years. We had none or they cannot be located if they are in the courthouse, we couldn't locate them. They've provided me all those disk. I have everything that they've done and made copies, I have in my hand now. We can't access them. This machine makes it to where we can access it, public can access it as a computer, they come in. We don't have to take somebody down to the basement and again, touch them files, which is risky. This machine is basically 30 grand with everything coming in and all that stuff fees, you're probably at 35 by the time you get it set up. It's a one-time fee. There was a fee being paid here, I don't know what, we got an invoice this year, we stopped it for microfem process. The company told me it was for leasing a microfem machine. I don't have one, is all I'd say. Have not fenn one, don't seem one, don't know where it is in office. That's what I was told as far as I called the company. That was around 12,000 a year, every year. This is a one-time fee. And microfem is outdated, you don't use it. This here puts it on a format that's durable. Our job is to preserve this county record. This is a lot item you're going to see on my budget from your own. You may cut it every year, but you want to see it so when something happens, I can say, I was requested the money, I didn't have it, I can't do it. We're supposed to protect our records and have them. We're working on that. We got to get them to clone into archive place where we got there down there. We got to put them on files, we got to have it. So with our courthouse and electrical, joy to be the work one day when he's not a council member here. We're not in the best shape with some of our electrical stuff over there. We throw breakers when we plug a fan in over there and stuff. So we need to make sure we have our records protected because it may not be important to some people, but the historical record we have is extremely important to others and we need to preserve them. I went as low as I could on this here, but that's, you had that money in there for that equipment there and you have 10,000 for the first year, and I have the estimate here if y'all want to see it too. It's $20,000 to get us caught up mounted. I got all of the disk back for free. And general sessions will be called up to where everything started going online and computer. Then we'll move to the other courts and get them updated on this here so we have all our files and get it called where we're on online file and stuff. So that's what that money's for. And the one thing, I know everybody's going to have a question, we put in for a vehicle with leasing stuff on it. And part of that can come 4D, we don't show it and it will be on the lease table, hopefully on par, it will come there. We run to the court, we go to the banks, minimum 2,000 a day, post office two to three times a day. We go to Hampton up there to get training, Alton and stuff. Every time my employee hops in a car, I hop in a car, I go to, I work on the weekends just going to get stuff for supplies because getting supplies from Amazon with our postal service, no disrespect to any postal worker, is not very good. So a lot of times I'll have to go to, I'm not paying the price that I see if I can go to Savannah myself, get it a lot cheaper, bring the stuff here on the weekend and not have to pay a higher price money for office supplies, court calls, fees for feeding the jury and stuff like that. I'm not paying $10 for all this case of water if I can get it $3 or $4 in Savannah. I just, I'm not, I'd rather take the time out of my day and stuff to do it. But when we're on the road doing that, if I get in a wreck or something, we're not protected. We're using it for work vehicle. It's work whether we do it. My employees go into the bank and stuff, that, they're working. They get in a wreck, we're not covered for that type of stuff. The county is not protected, my work is not protected. I'm happy to share a vehicle with the county, but by the time we're over there, we come up here, go to the third force, hide it out, do all that stuff, you might as well add another employee to do that because we're going to use that many hours a day going back and forth turning keys and stuff in. So you do see that in there. I do feel it's needed. I think it's well justified. Other clerks does have it, and I think for insurance liability reasons alone, it will pay for the county in the long run because it's a matter of time before somebody gets into an accident. And I'm not an insurance expert. I did have one in office and he explained it and talked with the attorney a little bit about it and stuff, so I think that pretty much wraps up my budget for my requests. The numbers on here have changed because like I say, the number we're paying in has, we're giving more, so it will go down some. But that's pretty much my request. I'm ready to answer any questions you may have about anything in here and if I missed anything in here.
The story's up. Do you have any questions?
Where would the car be stored?
I'm sorry?
Where would the car be stored?
Parking lot right here, just like the one for the county is sitting out right now.
And can you go back to when you said that sheriff's office is a reimbursement to the sheriff's office for?
Security.
Yes.
We was paying the private company prior to we taking office. We switched over there on the day I took office to the sheriff's department. And that would be just continuation of their fees to offset their fees coming in to do it. Whether the county says, well, we don't reimburse them, then I know they can come out of my budget. But right now, we're expecting to have to pay them back for service they're due, that's due them for providing the security for our building. I would assume it would be the same here at the executive building, that y'all would have reimbursement for fees there to keep up with their manpower hours that they put here. But that's the way we're assuming it's working. We don't know, like I say, it's new.
I'm just curious because they have a budget.
Yes.
And so I didn't know how we would be moving money from?
It's basically walking money from taxpayers, but it shows where it's going. I have no problem. If y'all say we don't need it, we're not going to get billed for it, take it out. We don't need it.
Yeah, I'm not saying, I'm just.
But I don't, I don't know how it's going to work yet. Ms. Burgess would probably be better than that so that, or Andy, but I just, I'm not sure. We put the money in there because we knew we had it before with the security company and we knew that was getting you over. The one thing I did miss, my court fund went way up. We have a program we have to have, it's not, it's required. It's 36 a year, basic, 36,000 a year. That fee's been moved into court fund. Jury fees were sitting out there, we can go somewhere. We put our court fees that we have to pay our jurors and stuff into court fund. So when you see court fund went up to 152, that's why all those, some of that money was sitting in other counties that's got moved into court funds to put it where it belongs, which is the court cost, to keep it all lumped together so we know, okay, this is court cost and this is what it is. You know, some of the print and stuff went in there because it's strictly for court related stuff. So that fund's jumped because of that. That's, I forgot to let y'all know that, I apologize, but that's where the court fund, and I know that's all your expression, but that's why the court fund did go up there too as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can you go over the salaries and wages one more time? What is, what is it now?
Let's say total. We're in, um, make sure I tell you right. I believe it's 590.
And how many people is that?
That is 11 employees, count me and the bailiff, which is three. That is eleven employees, accountant need and the bailiff, which is three.
Five ninety is proposed for FY twenty-six. Five ninety is was proposed for FY twenty-six.
That's not, that's not, that should be pretty much keeping it where from when we was here before. It's not an increase. That's kind of maintained where from our last meeting. That should be the numbers that it is. We're not asking for more in there. Don't need extra payroll was put for one extra person I requested. And you know, I know money's tight. We gotta cut something. We gotta cut it. We need it. We can use it, but I mean, we can't do what we can pay for and I realize that. But the five ninety is, I'm not coming here asking for more money than what I did before when we came here. This is that number put on paper when we had to do that special meeting.
Thirty-eight thousand on top of that.
I'm sorry.
The thirty-eight thousand would be on top of that?
Yeah. I've looked at, honestly, I think it'll be a safe number, probably about fifteen, playing with it based on where. Then sending money will cover that salary. That would get added back into that two fifty-five. You're probably be looking around fifteen max on that to twenty at the most with the numbers we're getting on our 4D. We've been working on that to get accurate number like I thought before. We've finally got where we can pull some numbers and get accurate killing where we are for title four money. So I think it would be around fifteen thousand, add extra person. Which will put it to where if not, we'll probably be paying a bailiff half that to be here part-time just for court. So we're getting a better value because we can use the 4D on that to kind of offset it some. To keep it and have somebody full-time for security in short and keep office staff the way we need and the courtroom staff the way we need to. Because like this week, we had court code on all week. We didn't use available. We used our staff to keep the costs down. We don't, I don't, just because I got the money, I don't spend it. So I could have had bailiffs there all week and kept my other guy down. We don't, we put them in the courtroom to keep costs down to the county and stuff.
Can you touch on contractual services one more time? Is that?
The last one is two of them, the sixty thousand.
The sixty.
That is what I don't know what is. I'm assuming from what we're told, what we know, that is the sheriff's department budget. Well, should say that was security budget.
Right.
Last time. We brought it over this time, assuming it would stay there. That's a question now that it's sheriff's department that y'all can answer if it has to stay there or not. We have to have security. It's just whether, how y'all gonna show the budget for him and stuff. I don't know. That's not. I put it in there assuming that y'all was gonna do it that way. If not, it can come out. But we have no choice but to provide it.
Well, I'm showing on my actual, it's like twenty thousand, three sixty-two.
What now?
Did we spend twenty thousand, three sixty-two before?
No, that was just part-time. That was, that was the other security. That was the.
Private security.
Like four, that was like four months. And that was one person at the courthouse. We now run two to three people at our courthouse, which is needed to do security and sometimes more. So we're getting, Christmas gave us well our money worth from what we're getting. And we're getting good quality service. And we're way safer than what we was. Not enough. The other security company was nice, but there's a big difference in law enforcement and private security company. And they do an excellent job for us and stuff. And like I say, that's a number we just had to play with because it's new to everybody. It's new to him. It's new to us. And it's new to finance. We just, we don't know. But I didn't, I knew I gotta have it. So I put, we put a number in there. And we kind of went off going. I don't, I hate to say I don't know, but I don't know. I've got five months and this is a brand-new service. There's nothing to base my numbers on and say, here, next year, I'd have my months, a full year, I'd say, okay, this is what it is. It'll be next year. This is what it brings. I can't do that this year. So I'm kind of, it puts you in a bad spot. It puts me in a bad spot.
Now, I appreciate your honesty. I just am looking at these numbers and just want to know what they are.
Yeah. Oh, I understand completely.
The twenty thousand is actually the prior private security and that ended in Janu- or in December or first week in January. So there has not yet, as I understand it, I believe, been a contract yet that's been worked out. I think that's in the works. But it hasn't yet been kind of worked out between the sheriff and the court of court and the admin.
Well, we haven't worked out. He's agreed to give him at least half his budget to cover it and I agree.
He's had to give you his answer. We're good.
No, we've been in conversation. We just wanna kind of give it to you guys and we all work it out together.
All right. It's not an easy quick step to do because I mean, he's been a burden. Taking him to office, you don't realize until you do it that, we all do because y'all do it. It takes a lot and a lot of time. And he's got a whole lot more than I do with manpower and budget and stuff, people he's dealing with. And I know with me, I can imagine what he's going through. We're trying to get everything working out. We all get to a point now where we start.
Well, he may be able to share some of his budget with you.
I'm trying to get some, I'm trying to get some of his. This looks real good. We could do a lot with that. And one thing I didn't mention, one of the employees we're bringing in that helps, we're putting in public relations to bring back what they used to do a long time ago at the courthouse. We're gonna try to get the kids into courthouse. And this position is already hired. That we all filled the last time. We took part of it time. We're trying to put it to PR to get it started when we get the kids and stuff back in the courthouse. We work the sheriff's department. When they do the D Y class and stuff, where they show it for prom and stuff, we wanna do something after that where they come to the courthouse and see what happens when you survive that crash, what you like to turn into after that when you drink and drive. He shows them on there what happened with getting hurt. We don't wanna show them to the one that's, who did it, what's gonna happen to them and how it's gonna affect them, where they're gonna be. Because I can tell you, it's not fun. I've already watched people get tough like this here, going back to jail for a while and crying on the way out and all that stuff. Walking away from the family and kids they got dusting a year on. That's what we wanna put to the kids and stuff. And we're gonna take that stuff. We're gonna give service to our citizens with the money of my, of my budget and what we're doing. We're gonna get the kids in there. We're gonna get the seniors in there and stuff like that to kind of get education out to the public. Show them what we're doing. See if we can make a difference in the community and stuff.
Thank you.
Do you got a couple of questions? The, the four mini splits.
That, the four mini split, we're hoping we can not have to do that. Their problem is our air conditioning stuff getting, gets hot, all that stuff cold. We're constantly messed with it. Since we did this budget originally when this came over in the first one, I've got with maintenance Dallas and stuff. They have a contract with the company that we already have out there. We're gonna go and try to get the system to where it does what it's supposed to do versus doing many split. The problem is what I'm told. I haven't been there during, so I've been there during winter and it gets cold in there. But during summer, it gets so hot in there. They have, if you look at the courthouse, it's very own a building, but I inherited it. Has windows units sitting out over there, courthouse, professional building. We're trying to get, we don't have to have window units poking off through our thing and have to do that. We have portable units. We have to set up now for our jury room because it gets hot sometime. My plan is hopefully not to have to use that other than go towards getting the system we have with the company we have and stuff and get it repaired. And we have luckily, I found out we have Owen on the staff and he's AC certified, all that stuff. So we have knowledge and we have a contract from a company. Hopefully that won't have to be used and we can get the system we have operating the way it should. But if not, when we get up to a hundred and ten, a hundred and some degrees, we need to be able to have money to do something. That is gonna be my last resort, spending that money on means. But I wanna get the systems where they work the way they're supposed to work.
And then my other question with staffing and everything, you're at the bare, you're at the minimum level for staffing that you've brought yourself up to what you need to run the courthouse. Is that?
Yes. This one here gives, I can make it without that. I'm not gonna sit there and ask you. It is hard. We leave, like I say, you don't have a room sitting with one person. I don't like that. I don't think it's safe. Can I make it work? Yes. We made it work five months. I can still do it. But it's not the best use. It's, we have stuff we haven't been able to do because not having time keeping stuff going. We have, our evidence preservation evidence act has not been followed in Jasper County. From what I can tell, there's no records of anything that we can inherit. So therefore I assume it has not been followed. We're required to do that with my evidence. And I can't say I started on January seventh of that. I'm gonna go forward. I have to go back to what I inherited, which was no log in my evidence and stuff. Sled had to do me an inventory. There's no log, no nothing. I got a sled log is what I got from my evidence and what I inherited in the courthouse. So that other person that we have, we can use staffing doing stuff. We can use to start getting some of the preservation evidence done. Different stuff like that we have to do, working on all the set off debts to start getting money coming in there. The one thing we've been unable to do for the citizen that we had before is passports. We didn't have time. We don't have enough staff to do it. Our, everybody's having to go to other places to do it online or whatever where we can provide it. We have this stuff. Our plan is in July to be doing passports again for Jasper County, which will be, we didn't put it down. That will be an income source. And I didn't put it down because we don't know exactly what it's gonna be. And it would be a guess. Just assume put nothing and what we get next year. But that is an income source we're gonna pick up there too. So. And we provide a service that we should to our citizens in Jasper County by doing that here.
And then the only thing is like with your title four funds and then your labor and everything, we just wanna make sure that everything is, we've got our eyes out and our t's crossed, making sure we're doing everything the right ways and we don't end up in the newspaper six months down the road.
My name won't be in the paper. I can promise you. I have sat down with Roger, who was the head of title 4D and stuff over. Any questions? When we all did my last budget, when we did that, the percentages that went in for salary and stuff, that was done the way he told me to do it. When we went back to our conference, that same group of people that I had in courthouse meeting with to make sure how we're doing 4D, we're doing it right. I went back with them and we met again. This is what I did. This is what you told me. This is what I did. I went step by step how y'all did and made a motion with the percentage and the salaries and stuff that we're paying. When y'all approved that, it's legal. We did it that way and they verified what we did is legal. And the problem is why we stayed low. I did it to be legal because I didn't know what percentage we were when I came in here the last time on child support. Because it can't be just used for family court. The money has to be coming from the child support collection part of it. That percentage can be used. Problem example, the paint job that was done over there. It's gonna be in the paper. My, we got pretty much information for it. Hundred percent of that money went to paint that courthouse by the record we got. Can't do that. The proper way of doing that is you take it, you have, you take the square footage, how many square foot of that house, courthouse is used for a family court? And what percentage of that is used for child support collection and stuff? And that's how you base what percentage of that six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollar paint job and other renovations in the courthouse that could have been paid for out of that title four money, money, funds. I've researched title four very good. And it's hard to find information on it, even from the state. They don't know a whole lot. The reporter did the article that he's already called my office today. He's, like I say, he had for us for stuff already. He's already called today on stuff on my office. It's, he had something that was wrong in his article, we believe, and I'm gonna look it up again and he's gonna look it up. 4D money does not go back to the county. Incentive money does not go back. There is two types of 4D. That's incentive. There's reimbursement. What we are told by the people that administer this program from the state, our incentive money goes back to the county. You won't get it this year because we need to go through our budget stuff and make sure our lot item's correct. So we don't give you any 4D incentive money in that. But by next year, you'll be getting that money back. My suggestion is as a council, y'all will end up having to make a motion to waste. You get that money back next year is what I'm suggesting. We can make sure it's right and we're not crossing any money. And it's done correctly, but you haven't got it passed. But 4D reimbursement money, what we don't use, will start coming back to the county to go back to the general funds. That hasn't been happening all these years. I've done a lot in five months to have no experience. And we have a very happy court staff over there. We have a very happy judge staff, solicitor's office and everything. We're all, we constantly got compliments, attorneys and stuff. We must be doing our job right. We're trying to do it right. And we're getting, we're getting good feedback from the public and the people that comes into our courthouse. We average basically seven, eight hundred people a month into the courthouse. That doesn't count the prisoners, the staff from solicitor's office, public defender, stuff like that. That's just people off the street. That's, you know, that's, we, we're taking people in there and so a lot of people are getting used to this and come in. Some of them don't wanna be there getting the ten dollars a day, but we get people in our courthouse and stuff. And we, we want them to come there to be proud of what they have in Jasper County. And that's what we're trying to do. That's all. And it's not me. It's my whole staff. I'm not doing this by myself. My staff is doing this with me. I couldn't do it without them and everything. It's, we, we, you have a good courthouse running now. And I was probably as nervous as anybody else when I took office with no experience. I can tell you, I have a long ways to go from what I know. But I can tell you from what I do know and what I've done and going to other counties doing my research and stuff, Jasper County is right there at the top of running as efficient as some of the best courthouses in the county. And that's came from some of the judges as court length told us that. So we're, we're, we're spending your money well. I know we're asking for it. Nobody wants their taxes to go up. And I hate to ask because I hate paying taxes too. But we gotta give the service. There's no need to give poor service. Get the money funded right and give the quality service to the people. So you get returned and you don't get in trouble and you don't end up in the paper six months down the road to a year down the road and everything.
Those are the questions I have right now.
Mr. Chairman, ask one more question. In the column administrative, uh, the medical insurance is a hundred and one thousand. Prior to that, it's like thirty-seven, eight. I think the actual amount was forty thousand. It's.
Can I, we can, what Nicole?
So that number was generated by the, the people in his department that have selected insurance and by which type of insurance that they have selected. So it's pretty much a, an actual, those people right now have that. Depending on whether it's family, single, etc. We're also anticipating a four point six percent increase in January. So that happened a year, two point three percent was calculated into this amount. But you'll also, last year, there were, I think, six employees and some of those did not, there were, they did not take the insurance. So it's all.
Plus the added employees.
Who took it, pardon me?
Plus added employees.
Yes. In fact, there's thirteen, there's thirteen now. Thirteen employees now. Last year, there was six. So.
Thank you.
Which three of the, on the executive, the bailiffs, I don't think they follow in the insurance program.
And I don't have many. I don't have the insurance for the.
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. A few questions. You know, we had the magistrate in here and they said that they didn't want the sheriff in the courthouse or in their courthouse.
They're making a mistake.
Excuse me? I'll address that when I, I'm actually addressing now if that's.
Well, it's just, I just don't understand what, when one court says one thing and one court says another. That's, that can be addressed later.
I can address, I can tell you. The problem with the sheriff's department that we had before from administration I took over was his sheriff and stuff does arresting agencies almost this stuff. They dealt with my jury. They took them back. They did this here. They was with the jury. There was nobody in the courtroom to deal with our juries, number one. My, I know what you're talking about, the court you're talking about. I heard it. And I'm like, all they need to do is the same concept. And they could even pull from ours from within the county and take some of my bailiffs to work when they have jury, which is very low, I believe, in that court. And use one of my bailiffs, but don't cut your security level down to private security when we have a chance to have the sheriff's department provide a security. If you don't think there's a risk in courthouse, then you can sit there and see what's going on and what we dealing with. And it's the same in the other court as it is now. Cutting the security, that's your decision what you do. Mine would be they take a bailiff program to work with their, their jury, not cut security. You're dealing with my safety and everybody else's safety when you walk into that building. It's a public building. You're responsible for public safety like I am over there. I want the best we can have possible to give security. So if something happens, when one of his friends is sitting there on attorney trying to say, you didn't provide the service, I can sit there and justify what I did to provide service and stuff and give him a defense for what we did.
Keith, I wasn't asking. I, I was just, I wanted to understand why one, it wasn't who's better, who's worse really, right? That wasn't the question. I just wanted to clarify that. I was just wondering why it was one court saying one way.
Different opinion of who's running it. Mine is strictly by what I went to. They don't, they don't touch the jury. There's no problem with them being in the courthouse doing security. And that's every courthouse you go into, it's pretty much, the sheriff's department is there running it. Majority I've been into, if not all I've been into. And they have the bailiff program working their jury. We're modeling our system right to other courthouses and stuff. And I don't see why there would be a difference between a lower level court than it is the power courtroom. But that, that's their court. They know that decision. I don't. But.
I just didn't, it wasn't something, just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
And I guess this is between administrator and you. You say we should have more revenue and they're setting less. Are you just being very conservative, Mr. Powell? Have you been very conservative?
On which one?
Because you, you said on the court finds was a hundred. Because you, you said on the court finds was a hundred, you wanted two hundred thousand, but you already said you wanted one twenty-five.
No, no, that's not one, that's given. That's funny, I'm paying you, that's fine fees, I'm giving back to the county.
So, yesterday, he wanted, he came, Mr. Horton came in and said a hundred and seventy-five and one seventy-five nine, the two.
Yeah.
This morning, or this afternoon, he's decided that they can be more. So, we'll have to just revise the budget for these additional revenues.
As you went through family court, no, we was able to go up on those numbers and stuff, is what we did. And looking back at the fines and stuff, getting the numbers and stuff, we can, we're safe with what we're saying, we can give. We won't hit less than that. If anything, we would hit more than that on both of these. But that's not me taking money, that's me giving money. And the one thing in here, and I don't, Kim can probably explain it more, we have fifteen thousand dollars that come out of my budget for my stipend, but it doesn't come into my budget, it goes somewhere else. To me, it looks like that's putting us fifteen thousand over. I don't, she tried to explain it to me yesterday, but like I say, accounting is not the top of my list. But I don't show no fifteen thousand coming in, I show it going out. It comes in from the state, but it's in another county, but it's still coming out of my budget. I think for fifteen thousand, which is a lot of money, but I don't see where it's coming in. To me, it should come in, then go back out. But I don't know how it works, Ms. Burgess does, and that, I'm leaving that part to her, and that's what I did yesterday. But there is that in there too. That fifteen thousand does come from the state to pay me where, on this here, it shows that we're just paying it out. So, there is that money there too, but that's a finance thing there, not on my line.
Now, some other day I'd like to go over, sometime we have a meeting, go over Title IV. Because.
Yes.
We have it as revenue, is that, that's March in revenue, right? Total revenue for the county?
What is it? I'm sorry, the.
Is the Title IV total revenue for the county?
It's now in this budget.
Right. But can it, is that restricted funds?
Yes, it's restricted how you can use it.
So, we have to use it, uh.
A certain way.
A specific way.
It's very restricted on how you use it. I don't have that off, that, that account is in the treasurer's office and stuff. If money comes into the county like it's supposed to, it's sitting in treasurer's office. If we need something, then we go through our request and it follows a chain of process. I do not have control of that account. I do have access for that account. Mr. Kent, it's getting that set up. I have your chef access and stuff like that. But that is managed by that county, but it is, I'm over if you, I'm over how you can take money out of there, because I can promise you, if you're going to take money out there and it's, don't meet the guidelines, I'm not going to sign off on it coming out if it's not meeting it, because I'm not going to be in the paper and I'm not taking a chance on going to jail for spending money the wrong way. But there is the right way of doing it and we are doing that now. And I'm not saying the administration was doing it wrong, but we're taking it, going through the process. I know that is correct and giving it back to where it can be legally done to help keep our expenses down as much as we can. And I think that will continue to go up more based on the numbers we got, but we're kind of staying safe until we learn more as we build. And it's just been gradually going up as we figure stuff out.
I just want to be one of the six counties that are under investigation for the Title IV.
Yeah.
So, I believe there's, the, the money that you put into your budget is, is it the incentive or?
Incentive.
It's the incentive. And then the other part is the.
Reimbursement. We're still working on that, to be honest, because incentives is tied up. Reimbursement, we're working on that to get more, bigger. The incentive is where most of the problem lies on different counties and different stuffs. We're getting that mastered and we're going to do reimbursement to get that figured out. That's what I'm telling you, like the last years, you haven't got it back in your budget. This year, I'd suggest we do the same, so we get it straightened out. And then what we don't spend comes back to y'all at the end of the budget next year so we can project on getting some of that back. I can't even give you a number on that yet now because of the way it's set up. Which is why you see me putting my funds, the court funds, all that and stuff to get some of this stuff straightened out and stuff. So, we can go have a clear picture and everybody can have a clear picture of what we have going on. When you come to office, you need to be able to look at my accounts. I can show you what we got, you can see what we got, you can see where our money is going and you know what's being spent, you know we're not wasting it. And that's where we're trying to get to for y'all and the people in the county that go to listen to office.
I'm not telling you to waste it. I just want to make sure that.
Yes, sir.
I understand.
Oh, good. You're fine, you're good.
Uh, you said you had two part timers for bailiffs, correct?
Three.
Three?
Yeah.
But we don't have it listed as part timers, so wouldn't that, do part timers get benefits?
No.
So, when you could, so we have to pull that out, so we, when we do benefits?
They're not, they're not in, they're, they're in your.
Oh, they're not in them?
I'm not mistaken where we put them, they're in the court funds. They do not get benefits and stuff, that's what I was trying to say. They're more, it's, that's more of a pot of money that we use for bailiffs. And we'll, we can kind of pull and choose, but we don't use them more than what we have to. And we've done, if you look at my money and what we've done this year on bailiffs, you can see, we've been very conservative with what we use them for and stuff. Because once we get through the heavy part of the court and stuff, and we can go to our staff doing it, we cutting that extra money out of court accounting.
You tracking that through the part time line?
No.
No.
We did, you'll see on my other budget, a few came part time when I first took over, because that's where I coded it to go thinking that's where it went, but no. So, you can explain more, but no, it's not done in part time. I thought it was at first. You see a little bit of money there because of that confusion wherever it's there.
So, it comes to the payroll. The, the bailiffs get paid through the payroll just like any other employee. But we, we will, because they're part time, they don't have the benefits, etc., which has already been calculated and already been determined in these numbers. And then what will happen is similar to like the volunteer fire, uh, people, they come through payroll, but then we do a journal entry, just like, and just like the election board commissioners, we do a journal entry to put them in the line that Mr. Horton feels that they best represent, which would be the court expenses. So, their pay will be, you know, it'll be reclassified from salary and wages to the court expenses, although we have to run them through the payroll in order to make sure that we would do all our reporting, federal and state reporting.
Well, essentially what I was trying is, if you have it all into the salaries.
They're not.
And when you compute, you know, salaries, you're not computing off actual, the part time is okay salary, but you're computing, that's all. Anyway.
Yes, we're, we're, we've computed this calculation.
How do I, the ledger on?
Yeah.
How do you track, how do you track that?
So, into payroll.
Yeah, I mean, how do we track it on our?
So, you'll see it in, you'll see it in the court expenses.
A ledger on.
You'll see it in the court expenses rather than in salary and wages.
But it'll be a line item, a ledger item through there, basically. It's way me and the treasurer and Ms. Burgess were talking, her, that's the way, my assumption is going to work, it'd be like a line item that are, uh, that's a ledger item that shows bailiff, usher.
Yeah, yeah, that's the stuff that's really difficult for me to follow up when you don't have, it's not like a line item, right? Because I would have expected that to be in part time salaries, so it can be tracked and followed, how we.
I have no problem putting it part time.
No, I'm just saying.
If it's in the ledger, then we can see how much you're spending. It, it gives an earmarked work or a benchmark work each year, so you.
The reason we did it is court, that is a court expense. And we're trying to see, so we know what our court is costing Mr. Horton. If we put it part time, we gotta, okay, well, this is part time for this, so that, whatever. Where if it stays on the court expense, when we run that budget, we know, when we see that bottom, we know what that ledger counts going through, what's breaking down, how much we're spending in a part of our courts over here for Jasper County.
That makes sense.
It's probably give us a better picture. Yeah. I think it will be clearer when you get the budget with the cloud and you'll be able to see, you just gotta, and I can promise you, we'll remind you, there's payroll for ushers down in court fees there and stuff. But I, I have no problem going to move it. I think it works better for the court fees, but that's finance and y'all, whatever you want. I'm, the money important is about which line item it is for you. We, me and her came up, we thought the best to put under the court expense because that's what it is.
So, when you see your budget performance report each month, you'll see a monthly amount in that, in that court expense line item. We have to give you the detail for you to see that some part of that is, you know, payroll for bailiffs. We have to give you some sort of additional information.
Okay. Okay. Uh, on your, uh, cost of living adjustment, I can't, what it looks like, and maybe I'm making the wrong computations, but if you take five percent of the seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, it comes out to, uh, seven hundred and forty thousand dollars for payroll.
Comes out how much?
Seven hundred and forty. So, you take five times, uh, five ninety, five hundred and ninety thousand times five, comes out to twenty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars in rates.
So.
But then I, then I went down to the thirty-seven thousand dollars that was going to be there and I divided five point oh five, which would bring out the number, and that comes up to center of forty, which is closer to the seven twenty-five than it is to the five ninety.
So, if you take thirty-seven thousand dollars and divide it by seven twenty-five.
By point oh five. I don't know, that's the way the rate was.
That's five percent.
Right, five percent.
Right.
Comes out to seven forty.
Where are you getting the seven forty? So, you have to do the.
I have to divide, if you divide it to three seventy, three hundred, thirty-seven thousand dollars into point oh five, that's what's going to be your figure you used.
I think it's the fifteen thousand. If you take the, uh, thirty-seven thousand.
Just, again, just look at it.
Fifteen thousand plus seven twenty-five is seven forty. So, it's the stipend as well. Which, all of that's going to go down now because it's now five ninety and now it's seven twenty-five. So, that has to change as well.
Uh, just on the computer equipment, that thirty, I, I'm kind of confused. That thirty-five thousand dollars is for the first one-time strike, right?
Yes. That's, we went from.
So, it's not the computer, it's buying the computer?
That's the system that stores it, so it is protected, waterproof, all that stuff. It stores it, it gives access to the tape. When somebody comes in, it will pull that number, so it maintains it. It keeps a record of everything within that system that you're using on that. It's a complete system you get for that, that means access to those records and stuff where you can come in, get it, use it versus sitting in a desk as a file.
Do you think installation cost also?
That should be around a thirty-five is what he told me, yes.
And the twelve thousand dollars data services, that's.
Which one?
The twelve thousand dollar service, data service, storage services. That's part of it?
No. The data, that, that's to go into courtroom, what she's, Ms. Burgess has been doing, to continue putting our stuff online. To finish what we have, it's twenty thousand dollars, I got an estimate here for. He wants to do it in two years, implement it, which is basically the twelve and twelve over two years, because he couldn't do all of it at one time anyway. So, we break it up by year. So, you'll see that nature to get, and at that point, general sessions will be up to date, everything on the disk and computer where we can access it and it's protected and stored, you know, so. And then we'll move to the other courts and stuff and start working. But the same machines, storage will work for the other courts. So, we won't hit that investment again for family court and stuff. And that, one that we got should handle all our records. He's been here, he knows what we got and stuff. We shouldn't be coming back to have to tag another unit to it, but you can do that, but you, you, it's a little cheaper because you lose the computer cost. But we should not have to do that in no time in my term or anything. So, I should be, it should last for a while, just like the shelves in the basement. We got plenty of room to store and grow down there.
So, what's happening is after the new stuff gets put on automatically.
Yeah.
Uh, the sixty thousand dollars for the contracted service with the sheriff, I see it there, but I don't see it in the sheriff's, the sheriff's, uh, revenue. Yeah, it popped up, he popped up real quick. So, you're charging, you're getting charged for sixty thou, you're getting charged for sixty thousand dollars to have something done, but the sheriff doesn't have it. So, just to let you know.
When we first met with all the elected officials and stuff, we got together, we knew we had the structure and agreement to work this out for payment. We're not there yet because we're keeping stuff going on, we might regret. But we know there's going to be money to go there to do that. That's fine. Again, I put my budget clause. I don't want to come to you mid-year or three months down the road and we get this figured out where it is and say, hey, we need to add this to the budget. Let's look at what's bad now and let's do it all at one time versus coming back later and have to amend the budget for something once we know what it is, because we don't have to back pay him, I'm sure, for this stuff. So.
Regardless of agreements, if it's debited out of yours, it should be credited into his.
Yes.
That can be adjusted, just as was looked at.
Right, it's the same for the admin building.
Right. So, I thank you very much. Is there any other more questions? I thank you very much. Probably the first time I've heard the clerk of the court come up here and talk about his budget.
Keith, if I have any other questions, you mind if I reach out to you directly?
Please, if anybody has a question. I'm going to give you a copy of these on the machines, you'll know what we're talking about, give you a little bit of information on it. That's a lot of money for a machine, but it's the cheaper one out there and it's the company that we've been using for our stuff, so we're not starting over from scratch. So, it's going to save us staying with this company to go with them. And they have a real good reputation when you go to the conferences and talk to other companies using it. And we've had good luck with them since they've been here helping us. They're converting all on microfem now, out of microfem budget, two computers, so we don't have to keep doing that. That was in this year's budget. They're doing that, that was around three grand, basically, there. They're doing that now to get it converted over to us, to a format that we can use and stuff, so.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate it. Do you have anything, Mr. Fulmer, before we have the sheriff, you know?
Yes, sir.
I mean, if just, if you, Ms. Burgess, do you have anything?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Sheriff?
Good afternoon.
How are you?
Good, good afternoon. How are you guys? Give me just a second, get the paperwork laid out. Uh, I gave you, I, you guys got a copy of handout that I gave you and I believe you may have supplied with one prior, but I went in and gave you another one today just to try to keep up with. Uh, I'm going to try to go line item, I say line item, request step by step, if you will. Um, obviously I have the, the largest division department in the, in the county, so of course, I know my request is going to be much bigger. Initially, we have to have our budget turned in very early in the year, so the end of February, begin of March, we had to turn it in. So, we know that, we know that that's, um, so what we submitted has been altered a little bit from then. So, I know we initially asked for twenty-five or so additional officers, that's been kind of dwindled down to just over twenty, twenty-two or twenty-three. Um, but some decisions that they made, I just kind of want to make you guys aware of, and you may be aware of, I just kind of want to put it out there. Um, one of our requests, budget requests for next year is we requested five county administrative campuses positions. Now, what that includes, that includes two officers for the government building, which is here, two officers for the, uh, courthouse, and then an officer for the magistrate's office, and then obviously a floater supervisor, which would be a total of six. That's been dwindled down, there's been some discussion, Mr. Kent mentioned, about the magistrate's office not wanting the sheriff's department to do that. Uh, when, by law, that's a requirement of the sheriff, the county sheriff in, in every county in South Carolina to, to provide courtroom security. And I agree with Mr. Horton, he says, I don't know why they want to go with the lesser versus more. And it was my, it was my understanding that Judge Lee requested to, to go back to this, to the security company. Again, I don't know why. Uh, but it is our responsibility and you guys, you know, have the ability to say, no, we're going to stick with security in that building. So, that number is up in the air, rather than be five or six, depending on what you guys think is best. I think it's best, A, based off of state law, that's, that's required by law for us to handle that as the sheriff's department. But two, obviously, you know, we can obviously, in the future, if something happens, say, hey, you know, we provide the best security for not just employees, but obviously the, the everyday public that comes in and out of there. So, we, we've done that. So, that, that number's up in the air. Another thing, uh, Mr. Horton and I have discussed trying to split a position, trying to split a position. I know he says he has some money in his budget and some particular funds, I don't know what those funds are, where he can provide about eighty percent of the salary and expenses for one officer. So, um, that would require us to, I say us, the county to provide the other twenty percent, if you will. Uh, so, the initial request was six. You guys, I say you guys, the county provided two at the beginning of the year that you guys already paying for. So, we have two right now currently serving the government building. But I had, we had to make a decision, I say we, myself and administrator. We kind of come to a crossroad in this whole security situation because ending the security contract with the security company, if we re-upped that contract, it would be for another year. This was back in January. So, we opted at that point, the, the county had already provided or agreed to pay for two officers. So, we went ahead and agreed just to cut the security company out completely. And then I, I've been paying, uh, out of my overtime budget for the other three officers, if you will, to serve in the other respective areas until a decision was made this budget year on, on how we're going to handle that. So, uh, out of that, out of that five or six requested for that particular campus, uh, security division, if you will, two of those have already been provided. One of them is the COVID. I said, we're going to try to split that, eighty, twenty, is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, and then. Uh, and then whatever you guys decide with the magistrate's office. And if you can. Now, uh, I, I do wanna say this, and, and when I say sheriff's deputy, obviously, that has a dollar figure to it. Uh, I know for many, many years, the council and, and administration has been addressed saying sheriff's deputy, but when I say it, it's, it's all-inclusive, and, and let me explain what I'm saying. Um, when I say sheriff's deputy, that includes the salary, the fringe benefits, all the equipment and an allotment or, or an allowance for a car for that deputy. So that costs the county about a hundred and twenty-seven to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for a deputy. Now, that's all, all-inclusive, salary, fringe benefits, a car allowance based off of what we're currently paying for, for a leased vehicle a month. So that's broke down in that number. So, respectively, when I say that, that word deputy, just understand that's about a hundred and thirty thousand dollar, dollar figure for a deputy based off of all the things that we're required to have along with a vehicle allowance. You're not chances to get out. So, with that being said, obviously, we're, you know, if, if, just a round number, if we requested ten, then, you, ten times one thirty is one point three, twenty, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, just kinda helping you understand, because I tried to push the understanding before that if, if you give a deputy, we're thankful for that, but if we don't complete the circle and make sure that he has, he or she has all the proper equipment and vehicle, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, then it's kinda putting us behind the eight ball, so I try to push the understanding that a deputy is all-inclusive at about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, based off of rank, insurance, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, so. We talked about the, the county administrative campuses, security here, the courthouse, and the magistrate's office. So, uh, right now, that's, respectively, we're asking for four, four positions, and along with that also comes some expenses. Obviously, we have to put together a security plan. Part of that security plan is making sure that we have proper equipment on site to be able to provide proper, uh, safety measures. One thing we didn't put in here was more metal detectors. If, if you guys choose to give Mr. Horton the, the funds to supply another metal detector, and he plans to bring that one over here, and we're gonna put it, the second one over here at a different door, to just provide another layer of security. Uh, but one thing in, in my request is for safes. We need at least two safes in this building, and two safes in the courthouse building, because we'll have deputies here full-time and there, and if something happens, then we want the proper, uh, firepower, if you will, secured in certain locations in safes on campus, on site, so we can engage whatever matter may happen if, if need be. So along with our request for the personnel, also comes some, some equipment, um, some equipment expenditures, so. Uh, and of course, we have it broken down by rank on, on so forth and so on, as who, and who we wanna have over here. Obviously, I have to have a supervisor on scene, so we have, we have allocated a sergeant, a corporal, a couple lance corporals, and of course, all the expenses with the gun safes and the vehicles and all the deputy equipment to outfit that deputy, et cetera, so. Everybody good with that? I, I don't wanna confuse you. If you have any questions, I'd rather you stop and ask me during that particular conversation, so that we're further down the road and then have to back up and kinda...
I just keep on going, I, I just, we wanna include the whole thing.
Very good, okay. Um, since being in office, one of the biggest issues that we've been fighting, or we've been getting complaints about, that we hear about every day, is the traffic problems, and I don't believe anybody in this room would, would balk at the fact that we have some major traffic issues in Jasper County. What then we're asking for is, is enough personnel to staff a four-man traffic team with traffic division, and that team would be responsible for a lot of things, but the biggest thing would be handling most of our traffic complaints. You know, we get, I mean, uh, you know, we, I could just go through the long list of complaints we get every day, you know, rather than people driving crazy, four-sixty-two, three-twenty-one, six-oh-one, two-seventy-eight, I mean, you name it, we get constant complaints, and I, I agree, there's oftentimes, I, I'm Rodney Sam Rhodes, and, and witnessed a lot of things going on, and, you know, can we stop it? No, we can't, but I believe it's our responsibility to do our best, and also to help direct traffic, that we can spend on this special events, rather it be, you name it, funerals, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, sports events, to help church events, all the things that we can send this team to, to help alleviate, uh, our patrol division. Right now, our patrol division is catch-all, so anytime there's a, anything at all happens, we're forced to send our patrol division, which kinda takes people off the road and out of the, out of the communities and neighborhoods. So we're asking for the council to, to allow us the funds to, to equip four new personnel with four vehicles and all the equipment needed for a four-man traffic division, and of course, I always say this, along with a traffic division, obviously, would be increased, increased revenue, because obviously, they'll be out there doing a lot more enforcement than we're gonna be doing, even though we're doing the best we can with what we have, and we're thankful for what we have. It's just one of those things, when we have a dedicated team, it's something we can, uh, we'll be more successful at. Also, we're asking for twelve new patrol officers. Current, we're at about seven or eight per shift, obviously, our goal is to have at least ten, that would give us the ability to, to stack all of our patrol division with, with more officers, and a lot of the responsibilities that we currently are responsible for during our shifts, uh, that can be absorbed within the shift. So we have enough people out, we're constantly doing transports, either be a mental transport or juvenile, or we have to go somewhere and pick up a prisoner that they're in another location, or it be another state. I mean, just recently, we've had people go as far as Alabama to pick up prisoners in Florida, et cetera, et cetera, so. The problem with that is currently, we have to send, send two or three people, or at least two people, on a transport to Florida, say, or Alabama, that's not always the case, but anywhere outside of Jasper County, or even if, if it's in Jasper County, it still takes them off the road. So we're trying to build our, our patrol division, our teams up large enough where they can kinda absorb that and still have a minimum mandatory. I don't like to patrol with any less than six on our shifts. I wish there were more than that, you know, we're doing, you know, better than it's been done in the past, and we're trying to push more and more and more, so we're asking for, for twelve new people for our patrol division, and of course, uh, that is the frontline defense of what our citizens see in their streets every day, is that our patrol officers out there riding the, the beat in the communities and, and our, and our neighborhoods, so. Next is school resource officers. We're asking for one new school resource officer to be fully funded, and the reason for that, a lot of folks don't realize, we have six schools currently in Jasper County that don't have any school resource officers, and we're asking for a floater, if you will, officer that can go around and visit those six schools and kinda fill in a media park and kinda get plugged in, and kinda help those schools, um, with any issues, security issues or things that may be happening. Like I said, currently, there's six, and, uh, with, with zero police coverage, zero SROs, and, you know, right now, we have seven SROs, five of those are paid for by grant and two are paid for by school district, and I realize not all the schools have the funding to be able to, to pay full-time for an officer. Uh, so, you know, I'm asking that, and I think it would be an advantageous move on our part, and, you know, obviously, the more the merrier. I'd love to have multiple school resource officers in every school, and I know that's not always applicable, I know, you know, along with that comes funding, and that's not always available, so I'm, I'm asking for one SRO to be a floater to help cover those schools that currently don't have any coverage. Also requesting a special victims investigator. Currently, we have five investigators. Those investigators are what I call catch-all investigators. So, if, if a, a crime is forwarded to an investigator, today, that investigator may have, you know, a break-in, tomorrow it could be a stolen vehicle, the next day, next day it may be a murder, the next day it may be a sexual crime against a child, and, and that's fine, that's the way most agencies work. But with the amount of, of cases that we have coming in involving, uh, children and sex crimes, I think it'd be very advantageous for us to, to hire a special investigator just to handle those kinds of cases. Like I said, you know, when we took office, we had a huge influx of cases from the past, along with getting cases every day, or say every day, but on a normal basis, and our investigators are just flooded and overloaded, and like I said, we just recently, we sat down and dished out a bunch of ICAT, which ICAT stands for Internet Crimes Against Children. We had to issue out a bunch of cases to our, to investigators, and I think we issued seventeen cases each. So obviously, when we look at the, the big, the big picture here, that's seventeen added cases per investigator, along with, um, things that are coming in every day. So, we're asking for a special victims investigator to be funded by you guys, so, so we can begin to attack some of this and bring our caseload down off of our, our investigations division. So, also requesting a narcotics investigator. You know, the, the drug problem is one thing we're dealing with, and it's just, it's only growing and getting worse and worse and worse by the day, and, you know, we have a narcotics division, a very small narcotics division, and of course, they handle a wide gamut of things. A lot of things I, I'm not gonna mention, mention out loud in open session, but, um, one thing we need is we need to add another investigator to that team to give them the ability to, to even investigate more, take on more cases, and along with that, uh, along comes with more risk, so. Asking for that, and we're asking for a crime scene technician. This is something that's never been done in Jasper County before. Right now, if we have a very complex crime scene, we have to notify SLED. Not because there's a law that says we have to, but because the complexity of the case, we just simply don't have the manpower, the resources, or the technology, when SLED has all that. I know SLED is a much larger division with state funding, and they have all the, the amazing toys and things, so to speak, but I would like for us to begin to move towards a, a, a place where we're being independent as we can. Uh, right now, if our investigator gets called out, their, their responsibilities are split in many ways. One, they're a crime scene technician, because they have to go and they have to process the crime scene, which takes a very long period of time, especially if it's a very complex case, uh, and along with being the investigators, not only are they, they require to investigate the crime scene when it happens, they're also responsible for all the evidence, getting it turned in and all the things, and also, above that, also doing interviews, investigating, the actual investigations side. So, this here will give us the ability to take a little more alleviation off of the investigator, hiring a crime scene technician where they can come in, they can process the crime scene while the investigator's doing just that investigating on the other side of things. And I realize that it's not a perfect world, and we will always trade those responsibilities back and forth, but I would like for us to be able to move into the direction, and there again, the more we alleviate off our investigators, then the more cases they can take on, and obviously, the better quality cases they can build. And if you look at the budget worksheet, there's been some increases on that. I know under salaries and line items, uh, under two thousand, we're asking for an increase in that line item of forty-eight thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars. Uh, but when I came into office, one thing I realized, that officers are being paid well, and we're thankful for that, but one thing I noticed, that our office personnel are not, and there's a very, a very large disparity in what they're not making, and we have some very good employees, we have eight civilian employees that work our office, you know, as office staff and personnel, and we would like to, to have a little bit of funding to be able to raise them up to a competitive pay, and help us retain our employees, and also, you know, helps them understand that we care about them, and we're just trying to stay ahead of the curveball and ahead of it, and, uh, just, just pay them a good wage. I noticed that that was a disparity that we had taking over. There are a few other increases along the way that you may wanna ask questions about, and we're not gonna say anymore about it. If you have a question about it, I'll address it, but there are some notes that we added in here in the budget that may help explain why we requested what we did and some of those line items that I may not have talked about.
Mr. Van Giesmer.
Yeah, now, on the salaries and wages, so, the amended budget was four million, seven ninety-seven, one hundred. Correct. And then, did we actually spend three million, five twenty-eight, or did we spend the four million, seven ninety-seven?
So the three million, five hundred and twenty-eight is as of the date that this was prepared.
Okay.
So there's, this was prepared, I think, in May.
Okay.
So there's, you know, there's another payroll in May that wasn't included in this, as well as the month of June.
Now, let me, let me add something to that.
Well, I understand that, does that, that make sense, 'cause the four-seven and four-eight is the forty-eight thousand, eight-twenty-two difference.
Now, let me add something to that, and Ms. Burgess can probably clear, clarify what I'm trying to say. I know that we, we receive grant monies and we receive monies from the school district to, to basically reimburse the seven SROs we have.
Yeah.
So, and, so that number, I can't say we played with, but there's a little bit of explanation that goes with that. I don't know if that number reflects that, or maybe it's just the hardcore numbers of what we spent.
That's the, that's the numbers that you spent, and the reimbursement is as, as part of the revenue. She has a two-hundred-and-forty-three.
So we're gonna add a million five to that, four, four million, eight forty-five, correct?
That's the new personnel.
For the new personnel. Okay.
Now, and what I'm trying to avoid, and I said it earlier, I just wanna reiterate, in, in past, come for, not just council, but come for council, I say, yeah, we'll, we'll give you three deputies, and they would only give me the salary and fringe benefits for that deputy, and then that would force me to be over all the other line items, because we're not paying for three extra people, because the other, other areas weren't properly covered, so that, that's why I just, I wanna reiterate that.
Well, in our last conversation, council meeting, uh, there was like a fifteen percent possible, well, you're fifteen percent below budget at the moment, and there were six weeks to go. Do you see us, I mean, I know what you said, I don't know if you realize what you said.
I, I did, no, I, I understand.
You said, well, you know, what I was spending, we don't get it, but is there any savings? Is there any, I mean, it's a tough thing. I know we're growing as a county, but I mean, we're, we're looking to save as much as we can, obviously.
And I agree with you, and, and I, and I feel the same way you do. I, I'm in a position to where all I can do is express what I would like to have.
Right.
And, and, and obviously, I realize that that's gonna fall somewhere between A and P. Um, I mean, I, I'm very thankful for what we have, and, you know, I, like Mr. Horton said, if, if that's all I get, thank, thank you for that. If, if I don't get a dollar, I'm thankful for that, but my, my goal is, is to try to move the department forward, and obviously, that comes with a cost.
Right.
You know, and, and one way we can save money is, like I said, um, so there, there's five current positions that we're paying for out of a line item that we have not yet to be, have been funded by the county.
Right.
And two of those are the current security positions here, and then the, the other three that we're covering already that comes out of overtime, and see, that's kinda one reason why we're asking for that, is because when, when our offices are, when deputies are off, they're having to work courtroom security, which A is evening up our overtime budget, but also it's not giving them the ability to take time off, so we're, so with more staffing, those, some of those numbers will, will be alleviated because, because of the current situation, which is nobody's fault, it's just, we had to make a decision to cut the security, uh, contract or up it for another year, and as we discussed, I felt like upping it for another year would cost us even more money, because we'd be paying a security company and sheriff's deputy, so I felt like, you know, it saved the county money just to make that decision immediately, and maybe just move forward with that.
Okay.
Start with the level. Just going back to the magistrate's office.
Yes, sir.
And the, the ask for the, um, separate security detail. What is your sense, is, is there any legal reason that that needs to be done, or, or maybe if anyone else can answer that?
We...
What, what's the core thought on why she would ask for that?
As long as that officer is not directly involved personally with the case that they may have, as long as, as long as they exclude themselves.
And if that, if that situation come up, what would happen?
We, well, he, the officer will call a supervisor, and we'd have someone immediately come over and relieve that, relieve that person of...
Okay, so another...
Right.
One in your department, not a outside.
I'll say this, and, and I'm not, I'm not trying to throw shade or spite on anybody, but I know that, that the security team helped with a lot of administrative things within the court, was a help, copies and things, and, you know, and my people aren't there for that. We're there for security, we're willing to help out if there's an issue, of course, but I, I think there were some relationships that have been built, along with the fact that they were making copies and doing all the running around administratively, and I think when we came, we came in and stopped, and I think they were used to having that, and it's not there anymore, so.
So, in all this two-page... So, in all this two pages that we have here, there is a lot of stuff there, and the bottom line was one million, five hundred and seventy-seven thousand. But in that, I see a lot of things that say, no fringe benefits. And so, if I look at fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars, and it says, no, not including fringe benefits, are those fringe benefits included in the one million, five hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars?
No. So, when we repaired this back in February, we didn't have the fringe benefits numbers. And we didn't want to put a number that was incorrect, or may, may be misleading. So, later on, we came, we have to speaking with Ms. Burgess' office, we come up with a, each employee's fringe benefits, fringe benefits is about twenty thousand dollars, give or take a little bit, based off of their rank and their pay standard.
But you had mentioned that an officer, where here, it may say fifty-something thousand, you can figure a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty, is that?
Right.
Is that number a possibility?
Well, that is the correct number. So, what I have written here, it's, it's originally was a hundred and six.
Right.
Five thirty-one, not including fringe benefits. So, if you add the fringe benefits to that, about twenty thousand per employee, then it's about one twenty-seven.
Well, it would be very difficult, because that number could jump well over two million.
Yes, yes.
And so, it would, and I'm asking everybody.
So.
Um, yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes, please.
But, there are, if you look through the, if you look through the line items, there were notes that said this included, say, vehicles for new, for new employees, new deputies, et cetera. So, if you look through this, they were reduced, and originally added into this new employee line, but it was, it was closer to three million.
Three million.
So, it was a much, which included the vehicles and everything, whenever it said, this is for new people, I tried to identify that, and then, so I reduced it as we went through this.
Well, why are we, why are we here? And I know it's buried in this paperwork. What was last year's adopted budget?
It's the entire budget?
Yes.
Or just for this?
Well, the entire budget.
Yeah, I've got it right here, just got to be on the last page. So, the entire budget is sixty million, three hundred and twelve.
Not ours, I'm sorry, not ours, the sheriff's.
Oh, sheriff, it's right here, okay. Sorry, I'll put it down a little bit further here. There's also a victim witness. So, it is nine million, nine hundred, nine twenty-eight, three hundred.
And what is the proposed budget that's been turned in for this year?
So, it's, so we kind of worked on that, because when, with the department request, when you saw all those line items, it said finance director will add, or whatever. So, when I added those back in, and I did make some adjustments for vehicles for new personnel, and I just put in what I call an allowance of a million dollars, it's eleven million, eight hundred, seventy-three thousand, two hundred.
Which could, if everything was approved as presented, could increase substantially over that.
It could increase from the nearly ten to a nearly twelve, yes, sir.
Thank you.
And, but that doesn't include the full complement of new personnel that the sheriff requested.
And the reason why I broke, I realize that it's confusing, the reason why I broke it down is because I know last year, the prior sheriff asked for personnel, and he was given, new personnel was given a million dollars. Well, that wasn't very clear, as far as how many people that was that included cars, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, we broke it down just to make sure there was not a lot of confusion on what we're asking for, and then, of course, you know, so just say, hey, I'm going to give the sheriff a million dollars, well, you know, there's a lot of red tape in that, so I just want to make sure this is.
And on the other side, you know what our budget is called.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And out of a sixty-three, maybe whatever we said.
Sixty-six, right.
Sixty-six, whatever, you, you see what we're up against.
Absolutely.
And so, we're certainly going to be asking all departments to, because we have other things that we need to do as well. And that's all I have, and thank you.
Ms. Jordan, Rahal.
Do you have a couple of questions? One, going back to provide the security details, are you all mandated to provide those details for magistrate's and clerk?
Well, that's part of, yes, sir, that's part of the sheriff's responsibility, is to, is to provide courtroom security.
Okay. The next thing, is school resource officers, and those monies come in and out, maybe you can help me with that, that if we get X amount from schools, or whatever, it comes into the budget under, you have your salaries that are allotted for that, did they pay for any other beyond just the salaries with those?
They, they cover the full expenses of those officers, to include mileage, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I know currently, and maybe she can help me, currently, all of it comes out of my line item directly, and then, they show the grant funding in the school as an income. What I would like to see is it kind of issued into a line item, so we can pull it out, and we can see that. Because right now, like.
The mileage, right?
Well, all of it. I know it's very confusing, but what I'm saying is, right now, if they get, when they get, it's my understanding, when they get a check from the grant, a five hundred and sixty, or five hundred and ninety, or whatever that number is, then the county's being reimbursed, and it's coming out of a line item, but I am actually never physically seeing that money back in my budget. And it could just be a budgetary swap around that Ms. Burgess is doing, I'm not trying to say she's doing anything right or wrong or different, but what I would like to see in the future is a separate line item created for those positions, so.
To where it's allocated.
Where it's broken down month by month, or?
But we have a grant, what we do similar to projects, is we do grant projects too. So, if there's an SRO grant that we give, we try, and may not always be successful.
Right.
But we try to identify those costs, and put those into the grant, so that one grant, SRO fiscal year twenty-five, will show the revenue and all the expenditures for that particular grant. I think the one thing that we are still trying to work out is that mileage, because it's, there, the sheriff has allocated some mileage, but there's never a real, you know, expenditure line item for mileage in this budget. So, that's actually some additional, almost revenue that can be used for items for the SRO, I believe.
And one reason why I'm asking, and it could just, maybe something me and Ms. Burgess would work out separately, the reason why I'm asking that is because, you know, those seven positions are kind of at limbo, because right now, they're, they're coming out of my line item, and yep, she shows that it is, that is, it shows as an income, but if I were to hire seven people in those, basically backfill those positions, which I should rightfully be able to do, then I'd be extremely over in that salaries and wages line item. Does that make sense? So, we kind of hold back on those seven, because right now, if it works out, or I could, she would create a line item, that I could hire seven people today. But we hold back, because we, there's, obviously, I want to make sure that we're doing things above board, and it is showing as a revenue here on the budget, but if it were actually in the line, it'd give me more expenditure throughout the year. Does that make, I hope that makes sense?
Yeah, just, for us, it would be beneficial, just an easy way for us to know money's coming in, money's going out. The second thing, school resource officers, I see it here, the private schools that are kind of in the verbiage here, can you do that, are you very allowed to, for private schools?
Wow. I don't, don't.
They, they have asked us to participate.
Yeah.
In the program, like in the program and stuff like that.
Yeah, we've been, and so they've reached out to us, because they wanted, they want us to help them with programs, data, and, you know, the prom things, and all, all the things that we try to do. And of course, we realize that some of your small private schools just don't have the funding, so we're helping them in some areas, but we just see this opportunity, if we can, if we can just hire a full-time, another full-time SRO, that their responsibility would be to help with these, these six schools, kind of move toward, to help with some of the programs, but also, the officer can get in there and kind of help find some funding for the schools.
And then, traffic team, we all know that we do have traffic problems, countywide, with different things, and you do say that it could be a revenue generating, and it can be self-sustainable, and we all, we all know that you, the consequence of doing dangerous things on the road is a ticket, how does, how does that trickle back down?
Well, I'll say this, you know, I'm, traffic officer at heart, worked criminal addiction many, many years, was supervisor over traffic division, and was a part of this same program, if you will, with the city of Ridgeland, and obviously, when I was police chief in Collin County, we kind of initiated the same thing. And obviously, we don't want to bank on fine fees and forfeitures. I'm not going to say, if you give me a traffic team, I'm going to promise you five million dollars revenue. I'm not going to promise you that, because I think that would be ill-spoken. But what I can say is, with, with increased dedicated officers, doing increased enforcement, along with that, the byproduct of that will be increased revenue. So, like already this year, just because, you know, we're very enforcement-driven, I know we've already written about three hundred thousand dollars worth of tickets that went back into the general fund. Obviously, I don't want to use a number, but I do know historically, that one traffic officer, historically, based off of just basic numbers, will usually provide three, but conservatively, I'm going to say two.
So, they can be self-sustaining doing the job.
They will absolutely be self-sustaining. And like I said, I don't want to throw out there that I'm going to promise you A, B, and C, because that's not my goal, my goal is to keep the citizens safe on the highways and the mileways, if you will, but like I said, a byproduct of this particular type enforcement will be, will increase revenue, yes, sir.
I think that's all I have on that, but one thing that we're, we moved forward to FY twenty-six, and we're trying to establish other things, and council priorities, and we haven't gotten there yet. Just keep in mind, we're having to balance this out. It may not be everything, but it is what it is, and we're going to have to look at it holistically, with some of the goals that we have, and kind of look at these things. But I guess if, if you're given X, you may have to prioritize X.
You know, I, I fully respect that, and like I said earlier, I respect you guys, you guys have a very difficult process of what you're getting ready to do. You're darned if you do, and you're darned if you don't. And as the old, as the good book says, you have not because you ask not. It doesn't hurt to ask it. I already don't have it, if you say no, I respect that.
You had, you said you had six SROs.
Seven, yes, sir.
Seven. Where are they?
We have two at Polaris, we have four, the Ridgeland campus public school here, and then we have one at the alternative school called J-CAP.
And they're all charter schools?
No.
The charter schools?
We have one at the charter school, or we have two at Polaris, which is the charter school.
Right.
We have four at the Ridgeland public school campus, and then one at J-CAP, which is alternative school, which is part, or is an attachment to the public school.
You want the other SRO, you had said it, it was for the school and for private schools. I find that troubling, to tell you the truth.
Sir?
I find that troubling.
It is, yes, sir.
Because it's not only private schools, we're getting other things in there. So, that was it. Last year, I guess I'm the only one that's been here from last year, we gave the sheriff's department ten extra employees.
Yes, sir, what?
When this is stopped, I mean, when, when do we get to the point where, because we are, the county is really decreasing, not increasing, not in your, your unincorporated for the most part.
Well, like I said, when we took over in January, the only thing that I was seeing, the only thing that I've been given to look at, was that there was a one million dollar increase in personnel. And like I said, when you break that down by the one-thirties, then it wasn't ten. And obviously, realistically, that's what I have to go off of, because that's what the hardcore facts of the cost is of an officer. So, there was a million dollars, I think there may have been ten approved, but you really can't hire ten with a million dollars. Now, obviously, with the cars and all, there's just a lot of, a lot of the budget issues that, I say issues, a lot of, a lot of budget red tape, which is nobody's fault, that's still difficult to, to understand. So, it was my understanding, based off of what I see in the budget, there was a million dollar increase, which is wonderful, but I don't know, that I, I can't fund ten with a million dollars.
I understand that, but last year, last year, what was happening was, they gave you half the money, I think it was half the money, because they didn't think you could, the number of officers that were trying to hire, you were always behind, so they would give you ten, and then this year, they were going to give, fund it fully.
Okay.
So, now, what you're, you're asking is, not only to fund ten patrol, you're asking us to fund fifteen. Figure it that way. So, and when you make a statement on, on that, when the, I think Mr. Van Giesmer asked, how many people are in the county, that's thirty-five, thirty-six thousand.
Yes, sir, sir.
But really, your job is, Hardyville is the majority, a majority, there, like thirteen, fifteen thousand dollars, uh, fifty thousand people. So, you're really not having responsibility for the people of Hardyville. You go down there and do serving, I think.
Yes, sir.
That's about your only really need.
Well, the other thing we look at are two things, or multiple things, but two major things. One is call volume increase. So, the call volume, obviously, every year is going up exponentially, obviously, because there's, there's more people moving to Jasper County. So, we pay attention to the call volume, but on the, on the flip side of that, my goal is to be proactive. So, my, if we can be more proactive and prevent crimes, then obviously, that's, that's, that increases the quality of life for our citizens, versus being reactive and responding to a call that we have to, so to speak, clean up and then investigate. So, that's kind of my take on it, as far as staying ahead. The other thing too is, the, many years ago, when I was sheriff, before, I was asked to give a comprehensive plan, and part of that plan was to give a ten-year plan where the sheriff's office should be in ten years. And based off of growth, and based off of obviously, all the responsibilities, and obviously, fulfilling those responsibilities adequately, then at that point, you know, we need to be between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and seventy-five officers. So, at that point, I presented back in twenty-seventeen, eighteen, that we need to be hiring a minimum of ten officers a year, to reach that ten-year comprehensive plan, and kind of stay ahead of the curve, if you will, lay the infrastructure for what's coming, and that's, that's kind of still, what the plan is, we're much better than we used to be, but, you know, like you said, Mr. Kemp, I agree, where it doesn't stop, and unfortunately, in this particular line of work, or career, if you will, I don't know that it does stop, especially, you know, us being, you know, with seeing the growth that we're seeing. So, I'm trying to stay ahead of it, and be proactive, and try to prevent some of the things, and obviously, have adequate staff to do what we need to do, versus falling behind.
In the last census, we lost five hundred people.
Yeah.
Right? We didn't lose them, they just went to Hardyville or Ridgeland.
Right.
That's what I'm trying to say, is, have, for example, within the products, could you go down and talk to Hardyville and say, okay, let's do it, share it together?
We do that, yes, sir.
Have you done that?
We do that, yeah, we do that. We currently, we, we have a shared narcotics team, we have a shared slot team, we have a dedicated agreement, MOU, as we call it, with Hardyville, or the processes doing with Ridgeland, and even surrounding counties, simply because, you know, we need a ten-man or twenty-man narcotics team. The issue is the jurisdictional boundaries. You know, Hardyville does a very good job, it worked very well with Chief Woodwood. The problem is, is he has to run the city limits and stop. So, the MOU, the agreement helps us be able to cover one another where there's deficiencies in manpower. And unfortunately, Councilman Rahal can attest, and you guys know, you guys are very smart, whenever we serve one search warrant, you know, it's twenty to thirty people involved, and that includes not just state, that's not just local, that's state, that's feds, that's a lot of folks involved. that's a lot of folks involved. So I know my request seems, is very tall, and I understand that everything I ask for, I don't always get enough, and I, and I respect that. But as far as the growth coming, I'm trying to stay ahead of the curve, all would be proactive and preventative versus other ones.
The, the equipment, 3752, do you expect to add? You have 3752, capital outlay. You requested none.
What, what was that here? I'm sorry?
3752, capital outlay, line 3752. You requested zero. Administrative asked for $228,000 for body cameras and laser. Was that from the increase in the number of people?
Yeah, a lot of the, a lot of these requests are contingent on what, what we're, what we're granted through you guys. So a lot of it really, it's, it's hard to put a number on because the request may be for 22, let's say you guys give a six or eight or 10 or 12, then obviously, that many body cameras, weapons, et cetera, et cetera, kind of dictates how many we're, we're giving.
I mean, this is, this is a very, doing a budget like this in a short, short time is delving in because I got the impression that when you did the, the increase in people, you included the equipment with it. And then all of a sudden here now...
This is a contract already. I think we already have a contract that we have to make annual payments. And this is part of that, I believe. Do you believe that's correct?
That's some of it, yes.
That's a 1.78 million dollar contract for five years?
No, I'm sorry, that's 228.7, like it's an annual, yes, it's an annual payment, yes.
Right. And so it is funny that in that situation, you've got maybe 20 people, like 15, 20 people plus cars, and we're talking about 2 million and then 1.7 over five years.
Well, so that, this is just a continuation of the contract.
Some of it, yes, sir. And I know it's, there again, there's a lot of information there that, to go through.
And I believe it was just a mistake on their, on their part where it said, department request, no increase requested.
Right.
And it was zero. And it should have been the 228.7 going forward. I think that was just a...
It wasn't a requested increase.
Right. It said it'd been 228.7, but...
Just to remain...
The way the program works, sometimes if you don't hit save, it's gone. So you have to hit save.
Well, actually, what I was, I just didn't understand when one part said, everything's included, and then all of a sudden you add cameras.
And we do have a lot of contracts of things that are ongoing that, that we still continue to have to pay. Yes, sir.
Now, the other one is the, and I'll get up, the grant matching fund.
What's the number on that, sir?
Uh, 2615. No increase requested. Last year, we did, we, you requested 150. In 2024, we did 229. This year, so far, and I don't think you're going to have any more grants, are you, in the Paul Park?
So that 150,000 is a contingent if they do a request of a grant and it requires a match, that was put in there as a contingency.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, the contingencies are great, but remember, if we put 150,000 and don't use it, we're taxing the residents something. To me, to me, I think that in this kind of budget, and really, the fire department's going to be the one that really does this, yes, that they say sustain. And when they sustain, then you see two, you go back two or three years, it's way less than what you actually had, and you're putting in there the contingency. Well, I'd rather see that contingency, so take it all out of there, it's going to be that way, put it into one major fund, and then as it comes up, they have to come back and say it. And then at the end of the year, we know what we actually did. Or if you have something that's definite, then you put it in there. But anyway, so...
But, but we have, we have applied for those grants again, and some have been awarded and some we're still waiting on to hear, the prior grants and some new ones and so forth.
Yeah, but my thing is that last three years, we didn't get grants. We got $21,000. We spent $21,000 in matching grants.
Right, I understand, yes, sir.
And we got 150 every year. Just doesn't make it.
Yeah. I, I agree with you.
If you go down to 50, then you put that 50 someplace else. You know, that's all I'm trying. We have to look at it and...
There's some flow of money there that we could be using somewhere else.
Right. That's all I have. Does anybody else have any?
Fully staff, what are, what is your full staff number? Do you know that? With sworn and unsworn?
Right now, we're at 74.
75.
75. And there again, we, we've held back a few with understanding the, the school resource reimbursements. So it, it could be as much as plus five or seven, but we've kind of held back until we can kind of go through the process and kind of understand it all and kind of understand the numbers. Because like I said, I don't go hire seven people and then be overplugged it. So we're trying to...
And is that included administrative's ass, too?
That's everybody.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much. No one has any questions? That was good. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Good detail, by the way. Mr. Fulbrook?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Ms. Burgess is prepared to give you a quick overview, and you have some hard copies as well?
I've given them, hard copies.
I've given them out.
Hard copies, those are the same. She can review the changes. As you know, this is a fluid process, you can review the changes that have been made since the last time we reviewed this information with you.
I just want to say something that Ms. Burgess has spotted something that I do it like, and that's when we have the people coming in, she separated it out, so we don't have a, we all have something like this to look at.
Right.
And it's, it makes it much easier, much easier.
The good thing about printing it separately like that is you can see the revenue...
Right.
Included with that department, where when we do it, we don't have a choice of the way this budget works, you work, is run, the revenue's all at the top.
Right.
So I, I thought that was very...
And that's another complicating thing, because you do it that way, then you go to the, every month, you have to blow up and down.
Yes.
I'll let you go.
Well, okay. Um, there, there were some changes from the first reading to the second reading on June 4th. And so that we talked about Cherry Point Fire District tax revenue, we took that back down to 31. So that was a decrease in the revenue of 608,600. Then, so with the property taxes, auto taxes, and there were, I looked at the boats, the assessed value of the boats, and corrected that, which is the water craft, that was, I have another number in there that I think that was, had changed, or I picked up the wrong number, I can't tell you, but... So that decreased from 354,000 to 235,200, which I know doesn't look like, based on the actual, that, that, that we would even reach the 235 right now. But when we go back and review and look for where things have been recorded, that may, I'm hoping we'll straighten that out because it's based on that assessed value that comes from the auditor. So there were a few, like I said, a few changes in property taxes and auto taxes, they weren't really significant. And then the local option sales tax, there's a particular formula that you have to use, and I tightened that formula up so that, or the application of that formula, so that the local option sales tax increased by 587,400, but the tax credit decreased by 493, so it's kind of more or less an offset. And then fee and lieu increased slightly. And then the big one is that the cash carry forward increased 1.5, 1.5 million, 1,554,000, from 2,805,741 to 4,360,000. And so that, the debt was the largest driver of that, and that debt includes all of the, all of the, the special revenue bonds that we have to pay, that has to come from the general fund, so that's the debt and the interest is the kind of IP or IP or being installed in a purchase revenue bond. And also the 20, the payoff of the 2014 series, the 1,300, estimated, the principal is 1,315,000. When we initially talked about paying it off, it was the, with added interest, it was about 1,329. I estimated about 1,350,000. So that's included in that debt amount. And that was the biggest driver in increasing the cash carry forward. The bond proceeds increased slightly at 155,741 because we also changed the, the millage rate on the, we went from 3.765 to 5, and then changed the millage rate on the operating to 145, I think it was 146.75, so that there's still 150 total, but we needed to have more debt proceeds in there, so we increased that to 5. So that's, that's part of that.
Is that this or this?
It is, but actually, well, it is, but that includes Mr. Holden's changes, so it's not balanced yet. I mean, that 230,000 will impact the cash carry forward. So I'm not exactly sure where you want me to make those changes. Do you want me to make them now and send out a clean copy? Or how do you want to do that? You've already got June 2nd, which is basically the same as what I emailed, not that I handed out to you, but...
Well, you, you're going to have to adjust all the, maybe repeating, but all the clerk of court, right? You're going to upgrade the...
The revenue, there's going to be some more adjustments to that, yes, sir, based on today, if y'all were, I mean, he's given us more revenue, then I would turn that down. So increase those, I think he said he wanted 2,500 for some commentary labor. So yes, I'm going to have to do some additional changes. So if you'd like me to do those changes and then sends you out a new, clean, or, you know, or all the work you, I can do that.
Anybody have any questions before I go?
I got a, sir, real quick, cash carry forward, just down in dirty, is basically unspent money from last fiscal year transferring into the next fiscal year.
That's right. It's your savings account, your sort of budgeting to spend it prior to your surplus.
Yes, sir.
It actually comes from your fund balance. You know, the unspent falls to your surplus, and then you use it, bring it into your budget again as part of your fund balance.
The, I think the other thing, as we move forward with this, and I'm going to pig back on something that Councilman Ozil had started our, our last workshop, was a real, what do we have as far as contingency earmarked specifically to reserves?
I'm not sure.
Like our reserve fund, like your, I know you won't be, what?
25.
25%? 50%? What do we have?
50% is the goal.
Right. What do we have right now, today's date, or around about?
I can't give you today's date. I can give you June 30, 2024, which was about, what, 35%, I believe our auditor said, 30 to 35%. The goal is to be at 50%.
Okay. And how, what is our pathway to get there? Do we, do we have an earmark that we want to do a percentage every year to start putting towards that to make sure we get ahead of the curve?
We're going to talk about that, but obviously, the cash carry forward is what we talked about last time. Last year, you budgeted $9 million, and so this is less than half of that. The lower you stay there, the better off you are. I mean, that's the basics of it. And we had toyed with the idea of dedicating a millage to build that. We have not proposed that in this budget, but that's something I think we could talk about after you pass the budget and we look at reallocating the millage for all fire districts and that kind of thing. We can talk about that too, to see what that means, may generate for.
Can you send that to us?
Yes.
Yeah. I guess I don't have it on screen.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. My other changes?
Just bring that.
Oh, no. Yes, sir. Again, would you prefer that I made these changes and then revised this before I send this out to you? I mean, it's, we're kind of in this fluid, in this fluid.
Yeah, I know it's difficult, but my preference is every time it changes, I throw everything away and I get a new document. And I know a lot of you take your initial documents, you make notes on them, you want to track the changes and so, there are a lot of different ways we can do this. I toss it and go with a new one.
Well, I'll tell you, the best thing in the world is what you did with the new 6, June 2nd, you separated that. So for example, you don't need to do the whole thing, just the clerk of the court, that changes, change it there and give us that, and that will bring us up to speak, I think, is that what?
Well, they will change the...
You don't know how much that helps. What you did helped so much.
That's the question overall, though.
It's going to change that overall, right.
And then we can have the notes there and if we need to transpose them, or then we check it off, that we've asked these questions, we check it off, and we can throw our notes away.
Okay, so you want to do that by departments first before we do the changes to the master budget?
Yeah, that's a question. Do you want, do you want, you know, the bottom line, the grand total?
Well, the bottom line, just the bottom line.
The grand total for everything? Okay.
Is that okay with everyone? Mr. Biggie?
I see the preparation of it. I mean, if you send it electronically, we don't have to print it every time, that way we can see the preparation of it.
Well, before we go too far, I'd like to have a little bit of discussion on going back to the emergency fund. And you, you'd made, mentioned that to build that, we could possibly raise a millage to do it.
Or add a separate millage.
Add a separate millage, raise taxes.
Yes, sir.
You know, we discussed this.
Yes, sir.
And so the proposed, everybody's department that have turned theirs in right now, is that the 68 million to, what number do you anticipate to be the revenue that we would have to come out of that? Is it higher, lower? What number is our projected revenue?
It's the, it's the same, the 68 million is the same, but included in that is nearly 4 million or over 4 million dollars with cash carry forward.
So...
Which is coming out of our fund balance.
If everybody is requesting and that total is 68 million, our projected income to pay for those debt, and that's what I...
Has to be the same.
It has to be the same.
It has to be the same. It has to be a balanced budget, yes, sir.
So that means, and I'm just trying to figure this out, that means that all the proposals that come in, as long as they don't ask for more than the 68 million, that's what it's going to be. Is that what we're saying?
So, I'm not sure I'm following the question.
What was last year's budget compared to this year's budget?
So what we did as a part of this budget, last year's budget was 60 million, 312,370. We amended it, so it went up a little bit, about 50,000, to 60 million, 362,353. So, now I lost my train of thought.
I know I'm confusing, I know I'm kind of confusing you, but I want to get down to this question, and that is, it sounds to me like everybody's requests kind of equal what we're doing. So we can't, we don't have the ability to go in and make, we can do cuts on certain things, but I say, I propose that instead of raising the millage or making, having a millage, if everybody's asked going in, why don't we ask from the council, and at least from me, that our emergency fund be put in the budget? And we have a dedicated line that goes in there. And whether that money goes to the treasurer, to...
So it doesn't work that way?
I, I understand, but in concept and in theory, there may be ways of, what you're saying, I know that there's another way to do it, but if we, if we're going to put money forward into an emergency... into an emergency fund, we need one to know where it's going, right? And right now, we're just assuming that whatever's left over is our emergency fund, right? Whatever money you have in the bank is your emergency fund. And I'm saying a dedicated emergency fund, a line that says it goes in there. Now, you can tell me it can't be done and it may not be, but you understand my concept.
So you can do something with your fund balance. You can say, you can make a policy that says you want a certain amount of money to be set aside in your fund balance. So for that, one way to fund that is to reduce this cash carry forward. So we were excited when we had 2.8 million, now we're.
I was excited when we began because it was at zero.
Well, obviously.
And then it went to 2.8 and now it's at 4.3. And Mr. Rosillo, I just want to say, you said we received those requests. We received requests from everything that's under our purview. We've scrubbed that and cut that. So it's not just the department's request. Admin has done those cuts. We just haven't done it for those other constitutional officers.
So what you're saying, what you're saying, what we can do is, for example, the show, right? Everything we, if we don't give you 10, that's whatever the money, let's say 500,000. We can earmark that to something else, meaning into the.
You can reduce your cash carry forward.
Right. And then, and here's my, what I think we should do, this is just something is, instead of having us say, for example, with the, the grant, you know, we put 150,000 in brand, right? Well, we've done 20,000. So take, take 20,000, give it to them because that's what it's done every year, or 30,000, whatever. And take the rest, put it into a fund, the fund that, right? So we have a major fund, so they have to come, if they need more money, they have to come to us and say, that's what we want. And we have to make the decision, do we want to, do we want to grant, get the grant or do we want to keep it? It makes a decision. And it's so static, the way we want to do it now is static, where I'm saying.
We do some of that now, Mr. Kim. We have a grant match line item in the regular budget.
Right.
Kim, can you go to that and show them what that is? We have, we, we just had, she put one separately in the sheriff's office because they have a specific grant that they said they were going to have. But we, for instance, if Mr. Lucas has a generic grant or, you know, we have one in finance or whatever, we have a solid grant match line item already built in, which I understand the concept is it may not get spent, but when we come to you with a grant award and say it requires, for instance, remember the Stormwater Grant, County Law, it was a 300,000 match, right? We won't spend that this year, that a grant match, right? Can you find it? I want to say it was like 600,000 or something.
So it's a little, it is close to that because we already have grants. We have, we have to pay for the Cherry, the Southern Street, James project is one of those.
So, so let's, we can take a look at that, Mr. Kim, see if that may be able to come down.
Well, that's like Marsh Pope, you know, that's expense that we know. I'm not talking, I'm talking about the contingency funds we have.
That's right.
And we continue to do it. We, we could use it, we, we have the money there, let's put it into a fund so we know. So if we're getting low, we can say, well, we don't want to do it this year or we want to do, we have to make the decision. Whereas if we do it the way this is being done now.
So we could remove it. Yeah, we, that's one of the things you have, I think you need to tell us as far as like with the sheriff, you want to remove the 150 and make it 30 or whatever you want to do with that. And then again, that would reduce that.
That's right.
Carry forward, which would increase your fund balance. And then you could determine that some percentage of your fund balance should be set aside or restricted for other uses, whatever you choose.
It would reduce the carry forward?
It would reduce the amount that's on that line item for cash carry forwarding.
Because it would reduce the expenditures in your budget.
Right. Any reduction in your budget would be, could first be applied to that cash carry forward amount and reduce that so you're not basically taking from your fund balance to balance your budget.
See what you're doing, you're budgeting a certain amount for theoretical grant matches, right? Which is an expenditure, which is, you're saying we don't spend it, we don't expend it, right? But you're also budgeting the revenue of your, of your prior surplus, right? So if you spend it, you do spend some of that. If you don't spend it, it all washes back to the.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not decreasing, we're not really decreasing anything. We're just putting it into a different fund that we pull from. That's all I'm saying.
We would be coming to you if we had a large grant. If we didn't, then we didn't foresee, we'd be coming to you to ask for the grant match and you would have to make a deduction from the, from the fund balance or make that match.
But what else that would do, my way, is you have a bigger fund. So for example, the sheriff has 22,000, we have 150,000 in that grant, but somebody else comes in from Parks Rec that wants something, right? We don't have to borrow from the sheriff. We have the fund that we can say, we're going to take it back.
Yeah, we, we, that has grown over the years as we have had larger projects. And for instance, the Stormwater Grant was 300,000 on match, right? So some over big. But the idea to have some in there, smaller grants that you could just make application for, there's a sort of pro forma, we can, we can ensure that we have it. It's a lot easier for us to come to you and ask you for $20,000 match to come out of, out of the fund balance. You know, that's not terribly practical either. So I think we need to have something in there, but a small number. And Ms. Burgess and I can talk about.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm saying if for four years we've got all 20,000, 20,000, you figure 30,000 in their, their cover.
So you're, you're basically, I believe, I think I hear you saying, take 30,000, leave it in their department, in the sheriff's department. Take the other 20 and possibly put it in this grant matching fund line, front line item that just, you know, that right now is 500,000. We would increase it by 120. So that that would be a pool that someone else.
Else could do. It would be better to, because here we are expending money in the sheriff's department. It's harder to take it out of the sheriff's department.
True. Could benefit someone else.
Right. But we can control, then the cabinet controls, not.
Right. So the bottom line won't change. It'll just be a reclassification between sheriff.
I'm not saying lower or anything. I'm just, you understand what I'm saying?
Do you have other grant matches and other?
Yeah, you just take it on your, to lower. Right? That's what I'm doing.
I don't think so.
But I'm putting it into one fund.
Probably meter to pay fall.
No, no, no. We're, we're just, we're, we're being more.
I think what the nuts and bolts is if we collect $7 million in additional revenues, taxes or whatever, we don't have to spend 7 million extra dollars.
That's right.
And that's, that's where we get to. And I think we need to start taking that philosophy of just because we got it, don't mean we got to spend it.
Yes, sir. And just because you can budget prior to your surplus, if you want to get really conservative as we started at zero, right? If you want to take that $4 million out and make the similar cuts, then you would be sure that you wouldn't have to dip into your savings. Typically, you budget, typically, not not would, you budget for prior to your surplus and at the end of the year, we've been conservative in our budgeting and generally the revenues are such that you don't have to dip into that, you don't have to spend it. But last year we did. We had, we had to go into that and actually spend it. And we really haven't had that circumstance since 2008 that I can recall. And we have, it's consistently grown. So it is a good idea. I mean, if you could be conservative and take that prior to your surplus revenue line item as low or as close to zero as you can, then you're assured to make a larger gain in your, in your fund balance. Does that make sense?
Makes, yeah, that makes perfect sense. And you're drawing down what I was trying to draw down before. Well, I may not have done a real good job at it. I'm going to beat this dead horse. The, the 64, I'm sorry. Yeah, I, I'm going to beat a dead horse. I'm going to do it. The 68 million dollars. And we say that equals what comes in and what we will budget. And we keep them, so that's, that number's in now. This, what is being requested, is that money in that budget in that 68 million? Is it already included?
No, sir. It's not.
Right.
Because when I added it all up, it was, I really think it was closer to 3.7 million.
I, I got that real quick.
So I did, you know, I took it out of those various line items, like vehicles, uniforms. That's how we got to 3.7. And then I made an allowance.
You're doing the budgeting before and we're coming up here and so I don't want to be under the false impression that this council can actually go in and say, we might need to do a cut across the board. I mean, is that in our purview to actually do that if we thought it needed to be done? If this council, oh, could, could they do it?
Yes, sir.
So this budget would be 2.7 million dollars higher than it is right now.
Right. I'm just making statements here.
Included what was requested.
Where, where, where I would like to see is, because one thing I do not want to do and I'll say it to Cameron, it's easy to do, I don't want to raise taxes, period. If we don't, if we can do it in other ways. If we have to, we have to. But if we have to, taxes are percentage, they go up every year, percentages, percentage, you know, and to keep adding to those percentages, you know, it's tough on me.
So there, so we really haven't raised the taxes because we didn't increase the millage rates.
Right.
But in order to make up that difference, we have borrowed from the fund balance. And that's what that 4.
And a lot of this is, needs me to sit down and I've got a lot of questions and I don't have time for all of them tonight, but y'all know how to feed the money.
Mr. Rosillo, I hear what you're saying and I think that, I think that we'll have much more progress in talking about those policy issues and where you want to go after you put your operational budget to bed this year. But if you want us to look at, go back and look at that prior to your surplus, that cash carry forward line item and come up with some scenarios where that goes down and give you an idea about how we can do that across the organization, most certainly in our mission.
But we still have to worry about, we still have to talk about the sheriff.
I'm sorry.
We're not giving the sheriff everything.
And, and that's not included in this.
And that's what we're, I have obviously.
What he wants, we would.
The 15 personnel and all of that that go with that.
The million five.
Is not.
Is not included.
Right.
There's a million included.
So that's what we're looking for direction from you, the constitutional officers. What do you want in that budget and what do you not want in that budget? That way, that way we can go back and really start to work the numbers.
Yeah, and I'm just, it's really easy to look. I'm thinking at that rate, we call it 22% of the budget overall.
We do have some other things we might want to talk about at some point because we have state mandated. So, you know, that's, and sheriff is included in that too, but we have some other, I can find it. We have some other.
So real quick, while you're looking for that, I do appreciate this tonight. I haven't had really a chance to go through it. I kind of created my own with what was first given and I've gone through it and I'm not a CPA, I'm a numbers guy, I know, pick things apart. I'd like to potentially sit down with you and look at some things because the math ain't math and forget certain things.
Well, I think that should be done in the workshop, not just, because we all have the same questions. Why, you know, you're going to have the same question probably against Chris or somebody else. That's why you have workshops. It had an explanation, but if, I'm just trying to do it all at once. So you have one question, Brandon, four questions.
That does help us because if we get individual, this is a question, you may be asking some close to same questions as Mr. Rosillo would want to ask.
What I'll do is because I won't be here this next, I'll send my questions via email to the chair and he can ask for me.
Well, may I ask that I get them in advance in case I need to do some research too?
Absolutely.
Because I'm going to be able to answer your questions. And if it is, I mean, not, you don't have to give me all, but what you have. I mean, I know that one question is going to generate another question.
And this sheet here.
But if I can prepare, then that helps, you know.
Mr. Rosillo, your, your, your line of questioning about raising taxes is interesting too because you are keeping taxes in this proposed budget neutral, right? The millage is the same. However, if you continue to grow the operating millage each year, you'll never be able to fund the capital projects that we know we need to fund as well.
Absolutely understood.
And I did want to say, our, the administrative budget, we did take a lot of it back to the fiscal year 2025, like each line item, we tried to, unless, unless there were some reason that we knew, something had changed for the, for the upcoming fiscal year. So, but that doesn't mean there's not room to look at it again.
What may be helpful is.
For our part.
If you could look at the administrative portion of it.
Right.
And determine what the percentage increase was.
Okay.
Minus the proposed salary increases. That might be very helpful for you to understand what we have done and see how that might, might work with your constitutional officers.
And Andy, just remember, when I said if it's 68 million, that is indication of revenue coming in and revenue going down, there's no way to fund a percentage going into our emergency fund unless we make a line for it. Is that?
Yes, sir.
Still doesn't make sense? I mean.
You, you wouldn't do that operationally in your budget, which you could dedicate a bill or two or three or four to a debt surplus.
An additional bill or out of a bill?
I would say you could want to do that out of, I mean, you wouldn't want to add to it.
Well, we're taking, we're taking the money out of the debt fund, right?
Well, you're taking it out of debt and you're, you're revenue neutral now with the, with the operating, but if you're proposing, if you were to make cuts in this budget, that potentially could reduce that. Or you could reallocate a few mills toward that.
Well, I, I guess I was trying to do the best of both worlds, saying, you know, if we put it into a general fund, then we have eyes on, on the product.
My opinion, the, the best way to grow your fund balance is to get that prior to your surplus number down.
But the prior year, see this, the prior year's surplus, surplus is really, we're looking at budgeting and we're saying, we're putting on a, in the military term, sand clacks in your, if you got.
You're saying I might spend some out of my savings if my income isn't as good as I think it's going to be this year. And if you don't do that, then you can't spend it. And that's important. Because if the revenues that we predict aren't as robust as we predict, we have to dip into that. That's taking out of that fund balance. That's the risk of budgeting prior surplus. We budgeted nine last year, we had to dip into it somewhat, as I said. That's why we started with zero and we went up and now we're in all about half of it. If you want to assure that you never do that, you get that back down.
Now, the sheriff's, just to just clear, so the sheriff has no, there's no increases in, in personnel in there?
There's a million dollars in new personnel, in the new personnel line item, which last year, you know, we talked about it being about 100,000. I think he's, this year says 130. So that would, that would potentially give him seven employees if he hired him on July 1.
If that's the seven employees, new employees or the employees that we gave last year?
New employees. That would be new employees.
So we have a discussion on that, right? Of what, what's going to be done? Because again, last year we gave him 10 with the fact that they're not going to do the whole year. So last year we gave him, how much was?
A million.
So that million is just, he can't go any farther, can he? That's what it's going to work about.
But, but you also have to realize, whatever you fund this year for a partial year, you're going to fund for a full year, the next year.
Well, that's what I'm trying to say is we, we're funding, that million dollars is not new, it's for the people that we've already done last year.
That's right. That's right.
But, well.
But he's under the assumption that that million dollars is something that he can do more of. And he can't because he has a 70, whatever his number is, which we have to know what number we've authorized, right? So we have to be very careful that he's not going to go out and hire 10 more people and say, where's my money? I'm running out of money.
Which we've had in the past. We've had that. We've had people get promotions that they couldn't afford. And he makes a very good point that we have to be, you have to be considerate of when have to be conservative when you think you're funding a new position, you have to fund all the bells, bells and whistles associated with that position, the vehicle, the vest, the training, all that stuff, you can't just do the salary.
So what I'm saying is, if we want, if we want to hire somebody or have something done, we're not giving him any money for that, we're giving him money for what he already has.
Well, actually, in that salary and wage line item now, is a full year's salary for 74 people that he has. So that included any new people from last year.
That's right.
So if that new personnel is, would be new people that would be higher than fiscal year 26.
But we haven't funded it.
Well...
No, we haven't approved it yet, so it's...
No, no, what I'm saying is, last year we gave 10.
Right, and we did it at abbreviated year, like the 64.
We gave half the money this year, said, okay, we're going to, next year we'll fund the, we'll fund the whole balance.
So when you put in for the amended budget for that, is that line item in totality of all the positions?
So that, so...
For all 74, what status quo is?
Yes, in the budget for this fiscal year, the administrative budget, that salary and wage line item has all 74 for a full year.
But in your budget, you have a million dollars for new personnel, which is not new.
That's because he asked for 15 new people, he, the sheriff talked about the 15 new people they wanted, and when you took out all of the vehicles and the uniforms and all that training, it was 3, 3.7 million dollars. So I didn't, I didn't put the full 3.7 million dollars on that new personnel line item, I only put a million, and thought, well, we'll give him quote unquote an allowance, if that's 10 new people, or 7 new people, that, that he says it costs 130,000, then that's what it is. But it's new people that for fiscal year 26, that in 27 will be, you know, 2 million dollars, or whatever.
Right, we don't want to do it, that, that's...
You're stepping up again.
It's coming up again. We're, we're just going ahead, and we're trying, we're trying to get ahead, and we're, we're self teaching. So we have to make sure that we take it out of, if I'm mistaken, take it out of new personnel and put it up into the...
No, because that's already in there unless you want those 7...
It's already, oh, sorry.
It's already in that salary.
It's already in up there.
All the new people that were hired this year are in that salary and wage up line item for a full year.
So you can take the new personnel out?
You can take new personnel out.
Yeah, the million dollars.
He has the 74.
Or our decision is what do we want to fund and what we don't want to fund.
Right, exactly. If you take the million dollars out, then that could reduce the cash carry forward by a million dollars.
So our homework is...
Keep talking, keep talking, after a million dollars.
Our homework is, do we, what do we want to fund, what do we require, if anything?
Yes, sir, and then, then we'll go back and see what we can cut out of that number and try to get to your goal.
And then we can take that money and put it into the fund that raises our fund balance.
Well, you reduce your prior year surplus, which ensures that you're not going to spend it. Yes, sir, that's the way you do that. Reduce that from four, whatever it was currently.
4.3, yeah.
4.3, you take that down then.
And that's probably part of the problem we have with, with the sheriff and these constitutional officers, if they change, they forget about what happened last year, or they don't know what happened last year.
It's very confusing, as you've seen, it's very confusing, and, and what you authorize and what they actually hire, and how many vacancies they had, it's constant, but...
Okay, thank you very much. Again, I have to say, Kim, that was the greatest invention.
If I had only known.
It just makes it so much easier, you've got everything right there, and then you can do the millage, you can do...
Well, Mr. Kim, may I say it helps to know who you're going to talk to, because I can provide that to you in advance.
Anyway, do we have any questions or any other comments?
Done for the session.
Ready, ready? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I will send you my notes.